Hello, good evening. We're gonna get started with our workshop here. And hello, good evening. Thank you. We're gonna be starting our workshop and we're pleased to have Johnson Controls here. If each of you could introduce yourselves and then please proceed.
Sure. Let me introduce the team.
If you can please move the microphone towards you.
Sure.
That'd be great, thank you.
Let me introduce the team. We have John Sanborn, our Development Engineer. I'm Dean Angelides. I'm the Account Executive for Sustainable Infrastructure for Johnson Controls. Tim Fair is an Account Executive out of our local Westbrook branch. And Dana McGovern is our Operations Manager. And just wanted to thank Mayor Shalene and the Council for having us today. And also wanted to thank Louis Turcot and Brian O'Malley and Mary Ann Branchick and Jeff Buell. Just an amazing team to work with so far. And we've had just a tremendous experience up here. So we're thrilled to give you this presentation. And we'll get started. So again, thank you and many thanks to the team that we worked with to put this project together. We want to try to do the presentation to be relatively quick and concise because we do want to make sure we have time to answer everyone's questions. So I'll just start very quickly by explaining what we do and the purpose of this project. We've built a project for the city of Lewiston that is going to be based on energy performance. And that means very simply that the energy savings that Johnson Controls will guarantee will offset the debt. So that the debt obligation is met through those energy savings. We guarantee that. And that makes the project basically budget neutral. So we're not asking for capital out of pocket. Although, we will get to a point where there was a capital contribution made by the city for a capital expense. So quickly, just to give you a summary of the measures that we're going to be instituting for this project. We're talking about an LED lighting retrofit, interior and exterior for the City Hall, the library, central fire, Public Works, Operations Center, and solid waste. We plan on doing building envelope weatherization at all the buildings listed. We are putting in a new facilities management system for City Hall, the library, and Public Works. We are also going to be putting in new air handlers and rooftop units at the library. That's the capital component. We're also going to be doing pipe and valve insulation. We're gonna actually put a waste oil heater into the Public Works building that's gonna allow us to take, that's gonna allow the city to use its waste oil as a heating source. And a good way to use that effectively to offset therm usage. Water conservation, we're going to institute at all facilities. And we're going to also do air compressor controls at the Public Works building. We've put together a preliminary cash flow for the project so that everyone can see. And this cash flow is based on an interest rate placeholder right now. Once the Council approves and decides to move forward, we will put out an RFP for financing. And we have our financing arm, we'll do that. We will solicit the usual vendors that are participating in these types of projects, Bank of America, some other large banks. But if there are banks that you prefer that we include in the RFP, we will do that as well. And to back up just one second, just so you understand, I know the Council is relatively new. So we were selected through an RFP process in the late fall into early winter. We were chosen between, it was between us and Maresco and...
Train.
Train. And we were selected. So want to make sure that we followed a valid method of procurement. Let's move forward. I'm gonna have John speak now about the measures that we're instituting.
Thanks, Dean. So we want to just get into a little bit more detail about the specific energy efficiency measures that we are proposing. And so one is an LED lighting upgrade across the city. And so the primary lighting retrofit is replacing all of your fluorescent lighting to a new LED consistent technology across the entire city. So in total, there's just over 3,000 lighting fixtures. And we will be either replacing, relamping, all of these fixtures with LED. So 1,207 will be a Type B T-led, that's LED tube. All the parking garages will receive new vapor type fixtures. And there will be, the picture you see in the slide to the left is what we call a recessed troffer with a door kit and integrated sensor. So places like the third floor of this building, where there's a large open office area. And some of the other office areas around the city will receive those door kits with an integrated sensor. So those will be able to dim. And it's a very nice solution there. That's the next slide. So the next item is building envelope or weatherization, we like to call it. It's essentially eliminating any areas of air infiltration in your building. So we did a citywide survey and there's several different components to this measure. But it's essentially weather stripping doors, it's installing new attic hatches, it's roof wall intersection, it's caulking, it's sealing up any areas where there's air infiltration into the buildings.
It's critical to seal your buildings because we can put all the energy efficiency measures that we can, but if the buildings leak energy, that's, it's kind of for naught. So that's a big part of what we do in our projects.
And similar to building envelope, but specific to mechanical spaces, we're going to be insulating any uninsulated piping or valves. So this is at the central fire station and the Public Works facility.
I'll take the automation portion of it. So we found the existing automation system in the library, the City Hall, in the Department of Public Works and Department of Public Works Annex was at the end of its useful life cycle. So what we're proposing to do is to replace that with a newer Medisys building automation system. This system will be browser-based and it will be using our Medisys user interface. So you can access it with the tablets or cell phones or a PC to view your buildings remotely. The system will be replaced on each one of those buildings except for the City Hall, which we will do an integration because the City Hall is still usable on the engines.
And we do this, you know, we do these types of...
If you can speak into the mic, please.
Sure. We're doing this type of work here because it's going to actually give your facilities department at Louis a better control of the system, access to the system remotely. And it will really kind of set up the city for any type of additional controls and additional energy savings work that you want to do down the road. So it really becomes the backbone for those buildings. So help to put them in good operating condition, make sure that the equipment is well monitored. And with that, you have an ability to do some proactive work as to making sure that those, all of the equipment functioning in those buildings functions optimally.
Next up is the equipment on the library. It was from 2004 or older, so those units are due to be replaced. So we are replacing those with Johnson Controls equipment. They will have the newest refrigerants available. They'll be all high-efficiency units to replace the existing equipment.
So the last couple of measures, and Dean kind of spoke to the waste oil furnace, and that's specific to the Public Works building. So instead of paying to dispose of waste oil from the trucks, we can reuse it in a waste oil furnace in the back garage bay there where it's, there is heat to that space, but this furnace will help heat that space better. Water conservation, so this is citywide, it's essentially installing low-flow aerators on sinks or low-flow showerheads. And then, again, at Public Works, is doing some updates to the compressed air system there. We did a leak survey and found some leaks and we, so we're going to fix the leaks and also install some controls to save energy.
There's one measure that we'd like to discuss with the City Council that did not make it into the project, and that is solar PV. There's a tremendous opportunity to offset electrical usage for the city utilizing the space at the landfill to develop two megawatts of solar energy. The reason it did not make it into the project at this time is that Central Main Power still has to perform an upgrade to the Challenger substation located just outside that area that serves that area. And once they do, what we'd like to do is come back and add this particular measure to the project. The one thing that we definitely understand from talking to Alan and Louis repeatedly about what's going on in the state of Maine and power generation is that we know that Central Main Power gets most of its power generation from natural gas. With the price of natural gas skyrocketing, there's a coming increase in the tariff that's gonna be substantial. And the best way to offset that increase is to utilize as much KW offset through solar PV generation. So when Central Main Power does announce its scheduling for upgrading that substation, we'd certainly like to come back and add this to the project as a change order.
So this slide just talks about current versus proposed utility spend and the measures that we're going to be installing, the energy savings associated with those. So the current costs there are $343,000. That's not the total city's utility cost, but that's the total cost for all the buildings that we're, will be working in. And so with the proposed savings of just over $74,000, that represents a 22% reduction in those buildings.
And just to add to the solar piece there, if we could have added the solar to the project, we would have been closer to a 50% reduction, which is substantial.
So this is the last slide. It just talks a little bit about efficiency main incentives, awards, and recognition. So as part of the project, we will work with any available incentive programs or rebates that are available for the project. So we work on behalf of the city to make sure that we take advantage of all those offers. In addition to that, you know, energy efficiency projects can offer some recognition to the city. And sometimes we like to do that in the way of Energy Star benchmarking. We can benchmark your buildings and if they score above a 75, we can certify them under the Energy Star process and get a nice recognition for the city. So what we like to do is after the measures are installed, is to benchmark the buildings compared to the energy usage before the project and see if we can go and get them Energy Star certified.
Yes, as part of our public outreach, we want to make certain that everyone understands the level of work that Johnson Controls and the value that we're gonna provide to the city in this project. And by utilizing Energy Star benchmarking, we're gonna be able to show where these buildings match up on a national level. And we can tell a pretty good story there and show how the energy savings are actually being applied to each building and how the, each building has, you know, in terms of its rating, its efficacy over the entire portfolio for the city of Lewiston. We're, you know, again, just to reiterate, we're thrilled to be here. We think there's tremendous opportunity to offset energy spend here. And we want to do everything we can to not only kick off this project and get it going and get that 22% savings going on, but to build for the future and to get the solar when the solar is available. I know the parking garages have been a particular pain point for DPW and the facility staff there. And I think the LED work is gonna offset a tremendous amount of man-hours and other things that are gonna free up DPW staff to go and work in other critical areas. With that, we really thank you again for allowing us to come and speak today. And we'd certainly like to answer questions.
The first question that I have here is, I noticed that your sample cash flow, the interest rate is probably slightly different at this point.
It actually, the, actually the interest rate, we got that directly from our finance group as a plug number. We're a little bit higher than we thought it would be. I know that the Fed did raise some basis points and we immediately went back to check. But the market has not gone and followed up to what has gone on in the Fed. So the banks are still looking at, and specifically in conversations I've had with a few of the banks regarding city of Lewiston, your credit is at this point double A minus. So it's excellent. And that's the worst time for that to happen.
Please tell them I said hello.
And let me just, I apologize for my extremely obnoxious phone ring. It's actually from, if anybody remembers Jim Coburn, James Coburn in the In Leg Flit movies?
Yes.
That was the hotline phone.
I, I'm sorry, I do not, that's not a reference that I understand, but please continue.
Anyway, I apologize. So what I was saying was that the city has an excellent credit rating. They're in an excellent position with a double A minus rating at this point, which is going to allow us to go out and compete and get the lowest possible interest rate. I can't commit to what that interest rate's gonna be, but as soon as we put that RFP out on the street, banks will give us a 50- to 60-day lock. So we can lock in a decent rate right now. And I would say now is the time. Now is the time to do this because interest rates are about to go up. And if we can capture that before that happens, so much the better.
Thank you. Further questions from the Council? Councilor McCarthy?
That page that showed costs and savings over the course of the 20 years, I think it is, what did you use for the basis for the energy costs? Is that today's dollars or is that got increases built in that we will save? Or what's the factors in that chart?
So we took an energy baseline of July of 2020 through June of 2021. So that's how we established your current energy rates. And we use the 3.75 escalator each year.
Okay.
In the cash flow.
Okay.
We feel that that's a good rate to use, especially with everything going on in the energy markets, with the energy increases we've seen. And we know that certainly the baseline we use July of 20 to June of 21, we know that prices have gone up since then. And so that's why we use 3.75.
So do you think you're middle-of-the-road conservative on your estimate?
Conservative.
Okay.
I would, I would say conservative. We do factor these things conservatively. We want to under-promise and over-deliver. I can tell you that statistically, Johnson Controls, and here's the interesting thing about performance contracting, is that if we don't meet our guaranteed requirement to you, the customer, we're paying you. We're cutting a check to you. Either that or you're foregoing a debt obligation payment. So there's a, it's a win-win as far as that's concerned. So we're very conservative in how we estimate these things because we do want to over-deliver. And I can tell you statistically, on a national level, Johnson Controls is cutting a check less than 2% of the time.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, thank you very much for this presentation. Secondly, some of us are old enough to absolutely understand your reference. So I believe that you're doing the same report for the school department? Is that correct? And when are you reporting to the school department?
That is correct. We've developed a project for the schools and we're presenting that to the school board on July 11th.
Great. And so this is gonna be something that's gonna be energy-saving throughout the whole city then, not just city-side but school-side?
Exactly, exactly. And we're thrilled to do that, by the way. And I know one of the things that we're working on for the schools is actually donating some equipment to create an HVAC lab. It's not an easy thing, but we're, I actually have my area general manager is kind of scouring, I would say scouring the countryside right now. We're looking to find donated equipment. We're, the one thing that I have to say about the schools that just completely impressed me at Lewiston, at the high school, is the technical center. And there's so much opportunity all the way through. And I mean, having your own, the Green Lidl Building is a personal favorite to me because I went to Johnson of Wales. I'm a classically trained chef, that's why I made the cookies. But, you know, that aside, when I saw that building, it just reminded me that there's so much opportunity for kids and for young adults to really take any path that they want. And really, we want to do everything we can at Johnson Controls to support that. So we're thrilled to have, to be able to develop projects for both the city and the schools. And also understand that that solar component, we would utilize all the acreage at the landfill to offset KW for the city and the schools. And there's more than enough space there to do it. It's just a matter of Central Main Power upgrading that substation.
Okay. And if I may continue, I have just two more questions, please.
Please continue, Councilor Scott.
So one of my questions was in respect to the solar, is there any sort of timeframe on that do you know of? Any guesstimate?
Guesstimate right now, we're hoping that they're gonna come back and say that they're gonna be doing something within two to three years, hopefully on the short term. It could be three to five years, it could be longer. As I've said to Louis and Brian and Alan and Jeff and Mary Ann, that we're the vendor. We can call CMP, they're not gonna return our calls. You're the second-largest city in the state of Maine. You're one of the, and I believe CMP is one of the biggest taxpayers in this town. It's you folks that can get this thing to happen. And I would strongly urge you to reach out to Central Main Power to ask them to expedite things. Because again, you know, they're in a position where with the price of energy going up, they're gonna want to have some kind of offset at some point in power generation and, you know, even, you know, demand, even demand control. So I think it just behooves the city to do all it can to try to achieve that goal of building that, those arrays and having that power distributed.
Great. On the temperature control's upgrade, what is the process if there were a power outage and backup for that sort of system?
The system is, it's completely backed up 24/7. It just, it would go to its defaults in a power outage. When the power comes back up, it's gonna go right back to its program.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Councilor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for staff. This is, is this a done deal already that the last council voted on?
No, it's still in, it's still in a in-process project.
Okay, they just got, they won the bid, the award?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Couple of questions in regards to, we're hearing it, at least I've experienced in my business, product availability. Is, I waited two years for roof-mounted units. Are you running into that same problem? What's the, that ties into, what's the timeline? Let's say tomorrow we say yes, it's done, let's get going. How long is it gonna take for you to retrofit the city?
So as far as the controls, those are readily available. The rooftop units have a longer lead time. It's about 25 to 30 weeks on the lead time.
It's not bad.
So it's not too bad. Yep. It would put us into pretty much springtime, which is about the perfect time to do a rooftop change-up.
And we had planned on a year for construction from start to finish, so...
Okay, that was, and that's just the city side, that's not the school department's side?
That's just the city side, yes.
Just the city side? Okay. The armory, loosened armory, the lighting, they just finally get the lighting that you can actually look up and not get blinded. I'm assuming with the LED, there's some kind of specialty lighting that you're gonna put in there so it's not blinding the people underneath and playing sports, looking up. This is not your first rodeo, I'm sure you have.
That's correct.
So that's a different lighting in there than what would be in the hallways?
Right. And again, we're not gonna replace things that don't need to be replaced as far as the armory goes. And I know that there's, there are things that are coming with the armory. I know that there's an engineering firm that's working on the heating plant and everything else. And when it comes time, we want to be there to stand side-by-side with them to address those, the needs of that building. As Louis and the gang that we worked with to build this project, as we talked about through the process of being selected, that you can do these types of work in multiple phases. This phase right now would cover as much as we can cover right now. But once that, we get into a good timing with the engineering firm, when they've completed their design, then we can work with them. And then hopefully we can come back here and show you maybe a second phase where there's an additional opportunity to save even more energy. And that includes, I would also include the mill building in that. As the police and the violations bureau move out of their facilities into the mill building, we also want to have some input on that as well because we can affect energy savings there. And also handle the LED lighting there as well.
Thank you. And last question in regards to the financing. So you would get, go to the bank, we borrow two, two and a half million dollars, whatever the case.
About 2.8 million.
Almost 3 million. Now, you get your cut right upfront? Or is that, do we pay, you're saying you guarantee the city of Lewiston savings for that? And that's what you're gonna get, the difference from the savings? Am I understanding this correctly?
So I guess what's the mechanics of that?
So you take out a loan and the bank will hold the money in escrow during construction. As we complete the energy efficiency measures, as each measure is substantially complete, the city will sign off, releasing us payments to get paid for that work. Once the project is completely constructed and you're starting to realize, as the measure's going, you start to realize savings. But as the entire project is completed and you're, we're calling it year one, where now you're accruing all the savings, then you'll have that first payment back to the bank. Usually the payments are made on an annual basis.
So how does your guarantee work?
So the guarantee works, we guarantee the energy, the annual energy savings. And we stick around and measure and verify those savings on an annual basis as well. And so we provide an annual energy savings report back to the city.
For the next 20 years?
If you'd like us to stay around that long. Absolutely. Typically, what we do is provide a very detailed report. Many customers like it for the first three to five years. And what we've done is catered years four to 20 at kind of reduced services. But we're happy to stay around and measure and verify those savings for as long as the city would like us to.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further comments from the Council? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator Hunter? Who is presenting our next?
John and Megan from Public Works.
Excellent.
If I might while we're setting up, I was the Council's representative on the selection committee for Johnson Controls. And then the representative, Deputy Administrator O'Malley was also on that. They were far and above. Anybody else?
Katra? Thank you.
Kachin. Thank you.
I need someone to save me a cookie, please. Okay, can you please, thank you both for being here. Can you please introduce yourselves and please proceed?
Hi, my name is Megan Bates. I'm the PW Deputy for Maintenance and Operations.
And I'm John Kaczynski, Environmental Services Superintendent. I generally oversee the solid waste operation, plus I do environmental services of stormwater and review city development applications for engineering. Now, with our...
We're trying to find our PowerPoint.
Now, where is it? Oh, it's only local disk. We can bring it up. All right, it's...
Megan, did you send it to MIS to load? It was on the agenda packet. I didn't know I could do anything for it, but it was on there. Okay, so it's not loaded?
Okay, so it's not loaded.
They all have it in their agenda packet.
Okay, all right. So, we will, it's a pretty short presentation, so we can do that without the slides here. If you follow along with your...
Yeah, we can right here.
Do you need a copy of the slides?
I have one actually here, too. I have one. And I'm not going to be referring to that.
I was going to share with the counselor from Ward Four.
I'm grateful that you had those with you this evening. I won't be referring too much because I know that you can read the slides. So, I just wanted to state just a few items above what you see in front of you. That the new automated scale system will go live on July 5th. The RF tags, which are replacing the current E-Pass, are going to be called EZ cards. Very similar to what you might see in a parking garage automated system. And even though it's an automated scale system, there still is going to be staff interaction with customers. There's still going to be checking loads. They'll be verifying residency. And of course, they're going to be at the kiosk providing instructions to all the residents that are coming through. Also, the staff have already been communicating with residents. We started construction on Phase One about this time last year.
Just about last year, yes.
And as customers have come in, of course, they've had questions about what's going on and they've answered those questions. So, they do have, our residents do have that information. Referring to Slide Two, the residents who have visited the solid waste facility in the last year, there are approximately 3,000, received this letter. Which provided general information on the back are the actual steps on how to use the system and as well as information about our new composting program. I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware and our solid waste workers have been communicating to customers as they've come across the scale, that the solid waste facility at July 5th and forward, going forward, will only be accepting debit and credit cards for payments. All forms of payment will be accepted at City Hall. But for individuals that are going to be using the solid waste facility to either purchase the EZ card or who have to pay tipping fees, only credit card and debit card will be accepted. Also, there has been training that's been taking place, starting last week, on the actual software for the automated scale. It's very similar to our current software, so the training is minimal. Slide Three is about, John will talk to you a little bit about the construction.
Okay, so, we have put out plans and specs for Phase Two, which is the second bypass lane going by the existing scale, the new scale we built last year. And demolishing, was it, I think it's a 1980s vintage scale and putting another bypass lane there so we can have a bypass lane in, a bypass lane out. Right now, we have only people coming in and out of the facility over the scale or they've been cutting through our parking lot to go do just recycling. Residents can recycle at the facility for free, so they don't go over the scale for that. And there are some people that want to do some recycling first and then come back and scale over for their waste so they're not paying for their recycling. So, that's going to hopefully get awarded. I think the next finance committee is June 27th, so we have that on the agenda for the 27th. And then they have the contract awarded shortly thereafter. The other bit of contracting work is a small office renovation. So, with the front office, with the main door, people come in, will have a customer service counter with a fiberglass window where someone will be behind there, be able to sell EZ Pals or EZ cards or assist customers with any issues they might have in the office. So, that's the ongoing construction. The bigger one, of course, is the bypass lanes.
Are there any questions?
Counselor LaChapelle.
Thank you for the presentation. It's great that we're upgrading it. The only question I had, using debit cards and credit cards, are we charging a fee for that?
For residents, city residents, they get 1,000 pounds free annually and that comes with...
That's not the question. The fee on the use of the debit card or credit card? If that's only, like, if I come pay my taxes over here, they're going to charge me 3% or percentage?
A transaction fee.
That would be part of the $5 fee.
There's a $5 fee?
For replacement card or for any, for a tenant?
So, when I go to buy my card the first time?
Mm-hmm.
It's free the first time? Free the first time.
But I, okay, it's free the first time. So, if I go to get another 1,000 pounds?
There is not, until next year, it will get reloaded, if you will. But you cannot purchase an additional 1,000 pounds. Residents get 1,000 pounds annually.
Okay. So, what would I be using my debit card or credit card for?
If you lose your card and you need a replacement, that's $5.
It's $5.
For tenants who wish to have, wish to be able to visit the solid waste facility, it's $25. So, it's basically $5 for the card and $20 for the material.
Okay, so that's the $5, the fee, that $5 fee, the charge for the debit card and credit card?
Is to replace the RF card, just, you know, because of the cost of those cards.
Okay. So, it's included in that $5?
Right.
Right.
And the only other times people will be using their credit debit card is if you've gone through and you've used up your 1,000 pounds and you're now 100 pounds over. You're going to be paying a minimum fee for that. And that's going to be, there's going to be a credit card payment right on the kiosk on the scale. So, you can go in, once you've gone over your weight, you plug in your card and you'll pay for that overage.
And so, if I pay for that overage, is there an extra percentage charge to my card for using that card?
Not with the system that's installed on the scale that I know of. So, it's going to be included in that.
It's going to be included. Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy.
So, there's still going to be one scale for in and out?
One scale.
I'm not understanding the logic behind that, but, because I go there on a Saturday morning and you can sit in line 15 minutes trying to get out because you have one person coming in, one person coming out at a time.
This program was set up long before I was at the landfill. I do not know all the history of that, but it was designed so that we have an automatic scale. So, we have an in-and-out gate, so it's automated so that someone comes in, pays in, then it alternates the person going out. So, it's going to alternate in and out. It's part of a computer program that runs the gates.
While there was two scales, there was still only one scale attendant. So, regardless of who was on each of the scales, one person was always waiting.
For the scale attendant.
For that scale attendant. So, this will be all automated.
Well, that's where the efficiency coming is. You go on there, you scan your card, you get off the scale. You come back, you scan your card. If you're under your 1,000 pounds, the gate lifts and you go. So, there's no interaction with a scale attendant. And if, you know, there's no looking you up, it's your card. If the card's not working, well, then we have to get a scale attendant out there to help you. But it's, the idea is then if you, if you go over the payment, go over the weight, then you're paying right there at the kiosk. And once you make your payment with a credit card, the gate lifts and you're off on the scale.
So, there's going to be a gate on each side so you don't have two people trying to go at the same time?
Yeah, there's a gate, there's lights and gates. We have two traffic lights and two gates.
Okay.
There's a traffic light at each scale and there's a one, you know, 50 feet back from the scale. So, the first light lets you go up to the scale, approach. If someone's on the scale, then it's not going to come off. And it's actually designed not to let you come up, approach, until someone's off the scale.
There will also be a bypass lane for people who have, like, recycling. Previous, they had to go over the scale. With the new automated, they'll bypass that scale and go directly to unload their recycling.
Now, is the recycling going to be separate from where all the trash and everything is? Or do you have to have an attendant keep track of where people go?
We have attendants at the...
Drop-off area.
At the drop-off area.
So, they'll be there to monitor where they came in and make sure they only dropped recycling?
Right. And they are there to inspect loads and also to verify residency. So, we will still have someone in the drop-off area.
Just so you know, they're very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Can you please bring the microphone closer to you? Thank you. Counselor Scott.
Thank you. So, I have a couple of questions about the composting program. So, first off, I think that's fantastic. I've been looking for something like this for quite some time. So, I see that the first 100 customers will get the free composting pails. Will there be others available for people to purchase? Or are you just, we can do our own? Or have you, what's the process on that?
This was just a sort of pilot program, so we purchased 100 pails. You know, if it becomes popular, we can certainly talk to you about, you know, the cost of purchasing the more pails for sale. Right now, they're about $9.50 apiece. We can go into Maine Resource Curry Association, that's Victor Horton, that's there out of... Oh, I forget where. I think it's in the Gust area. But anyways, they've been doing, they do a lot of these composting pails, recycling bin things that they, for many of the cities and towns in Maine. So, we, again, we, as part of a pilot, we're seeing how this works. We have right now one bin. We're having that service. It's been a little slow to start, but we're hoping that it becomes more popular, then we can add more bins and have this take off and, you know, make this program gain some legs and grow. It's a good way of actually reducing food waste going into the trash. And it goes to M-WAC to burn. And we'll go to AgRecycle, who we are contracting with, and they will go and compost that, turn it into bio gas and generate electricity with it, plus get a compost material out of the backend, too.
Well, that was another question I was going to have for you. So, if we're using this, can we go pick, will residents be able to go get compost there for compost used? Or not at this point?
None at this point. It's very small. You know, maybe if it gets more popular and maybe that's something we can explore of having a, you know, more robust composting program.
This is sort of a first step. And sending the letters out, this will reach 3,000 people. So, this is another way of getting the information out about that.
Well, that's where I was going to ask also. So, and this is also this information about the composting and the food available that you can compost will be available on the campaign next week when you put that out, too?
Yes, it will.
I think you're going to get a lot more than 100 people interested in this. I've had a lot of conversations with many folks that are excited about having some composting that's already available in Portland and other areas in the state. And I think that you're going to get a lot more people that are going to be interested in doing that. That's good to hear.
Yeah, we're glad to hear that, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Herman.
Thank you. Just regarding the compost program, is there any, I know it's in its sort of infancy right now. Is there any plans to maybe expand it to have other drop-off sites, maybe in the downtown area? I mean, I haven't been to the landfill in years, so there's a lot of people who get their trash picked up and don't really have a reason to go out there. So, maybe that's just, that's something for the next phase of the project.
Certainly.
We'd have to go and, you know, get some DEP permits for those compost pickup sites, you know, outside of the licensed landfill. But that's certainly a possibility, you know. I think some other communities have done that with these kiosks or compost pickup sites that you can put across your community.
Thank you.
Further questions from the council? Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, if one has the E-Pass now, you have to pick up a new card at the gate there? Or are they going to be handed out or...
Right.
If you have a recent E-Pass, you're going to get a mailed E-card.
Okay.
With this letter. Like I said, we've got about 3,000 of these, just under 3,000 is going out this week.
1,000 pounds per year and then you pay, what, a ton for tipping after that?
Yes, it's $100 a ton right now.
$100 a ton?
There's a 140-pound minimum that costs $7. So, there's a minimum charge. So, zero to 140 pounds is $7. And after that, it's $100 a ton, which comes out to about $1 for every 20 pounds.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful evening. And we will be back here at 7:00. Hello, welcome to our city council meeting. We will begin, and we will start off with a pledge of allegiance, and we will be led by our police chief, David St. Pierre. We will have a presentation here for a scholarship. However, the student has not yet joined us, so we will proceed with the agenda and then move into that when the student arrives. Madam Clerk.
Sure, the next item is that all roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the counselor of Ward Six.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So.
Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor Pease. Madam Clerk.
Counsel from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
And Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed, my vote of seven to zero.
We will now have a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record, and please indicate if you are a Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the city council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the city council to allow comments related to personnel matters. Any personnel complaint should be made directly to city administration, to the city administration office. Public comment? Please step up to the podium up here, sir? Or, yes, to the back of you.
So my name's Jay Allen, I'm a landlord in Lewiston, I own 62 units. I'm here today just to get something into the public record. I'm going to be brief and respectful. So last week, in quick succession, I've got notified that I was having a GA inspection on one of my units, followed by a Lewiston Fire Department inspection on another one of my units, followed by a call from the Lewiston Police Department informing me that a city counselor was bothered by my YouTube videos that I've been posting concerning the homeless and drug addict problem in Lewiston. So I just have three things to ask, I understand they're not going to be answered today. So I'm just wondering if any of the eight city counselors wants to step forward and say that they were the ones that called and put the Lewiston Police Department in a very awkward situation. The second thing is, did it ever occur to this city counselor that they had the option at any point just to pick up the phone and talk to me? Right, we've been trying to do that for 10 years and no one has done it yet. So I guess that wasn't an option. And then the last thing that I'd really like an answer on, there are eight of you on the council. Is it really okay with the other seven that somebody thought that they had the power to try to use the Lewiston Police Department to dissuade me from making YouTube videos about the homeless problem in Lewiston? And that's all I've got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Public comment is now closed. Cadence? Yes. We will proceed with the scholarship presentation.
On behalf of Lewiston firefighters, we'd like to thank you for your three years on the Youth Advisory Council and the support you've shown for the city. It's remarkable when we got together to make a decision, the fact that you hold a part-time job, you were working on the council all through those years and with all the epidemic issues. It's a testament, and I know you're going to be successful in college, congratulations.
Thank you.
We have, sorry, we have a presentation here for you, from the Fire Department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cadence. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I add something? I would just like to point out that Cadence was one of our top 10 students when she graduated a couple of weeks ago, and she is on our Lewiston Youth Advisory Committee. They have been meeting this evening to discuss the celebrating Lewiston celebration that is happening this coming Saturday. And as I can see, Dottie has most of them there, and I would like them to come out so that our council can see our Youth Advisory Committee. And thank you all for your great work.
Welcome.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, guys. We look forward to seeing you Saturday.
Now that we've embarrassed you, you're all set.
Yeah.
Congratulations, Cadence. Thank you, Captain. Madam Clerk.
Sure, the next item is consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda this evening. Item number one, order authorizing execution of municipal quitclaim deeds for real estate located at 19 Eustace Street and 139 Oak Street. And number two, appointment to the Lewiston Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Madam Clerk, Counselor Jolinas?
Second.
Counselor Scott? Madam Clerk?
Is that?
Yes.
Sure, counsel from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Word One?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
Word Five?
Yes.
Motion passed, my vote of seven to zero.
Okay, I'm very proud of all of you. Madam Clerk, next agenda item.
Item number three, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for a musical concert for the Fiddler's Rendezvous in Kennedy Park. Requested action to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event in Kennedy Park and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to LA Arts for an outdoor music concert to be held in Kennedy Park on Saturday, August 14th, contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
Madam Clerk, Counselor McCarthy, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion? Public comment for this, Counselor Pease?
Is there a fee for this permit?
There is, and if you're going to ask me the amount, it is, yes, it is, they are, they need an outdoor entertainment permit, which is the one that's before you. It is $50, but for a Lewiston-based nonprofit, it is 25, and they've paid their $25.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we could avoid the payment.
They did not request that it be waived, and we extend the courtesy of a 50% discount to all Lewiston-based nonprofits normally.
Okay, thank you.
Item number four, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for a musical concert for the Rally for Recovery event in Kennedy Park. Requested action: to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event in Kennedy Park and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee for an outdoor music concert to be held at Kennedy Park on Saturday, September 17th, contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
Madam Clerk, Counselor Jelineus, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion? Counselor Jelineus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to share with my colleagues, you know, as Chair of the Lewiston Area Public Health Committee, you know, we have some committee members there, as well as members from the mayoral ad hoc committee on substance use and recovery. There's a lot of energy behind this event, and this will be our second event that we are holding at Kennedy Park. And, you know, last year we had an excellent turnout. We're hoping for even bigger one, as we continue to seek toward becoming a recovery-ready community.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I just want to say that I went to last year's event. It was a great event, and I look forward to this one. Thank you.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Yes, I will say, thank you, Stephanie, for heading this up, and I'm looking forward to it as well. Further discussion from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number five?
Item number five, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for a musical concert for the Taste of Harvest event. Requested action: to conduct a public hearing on an application for an outdoor entertainment event for Dufrane Plaza and Lower Lisbon Street and to grant a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, for an outdoor music concert to be held at Dufrane Plaza and Lower Lisbon Street on Wednesday, October 5th, contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Health Officer, and Land Use Inspector regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
Madam Clerk, motion? Counselor Scott, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion? Counselor Scott?
Again, just want to say, last year I attended this event. It was phenomenal. The food was great, and I look forward to going again this year.
I appreciate the many vegetarian options at last year's event. I'm looking forward to the same this year. Counselor LaChapelle?
They allude to Dufrane Plaza and Lower Lisbon Street. Where on Lower Lisbon Street are they?
I think we blocked off the street from, was it Pine? Pine and Ash?
Ash to Main.
Ash to Main.
Yep.
That's Lower Lisbon Street?
That's the head of the street.
I've been on Lower Lisbon Street.[780.12][780.12](laughing) I was confused. I didn't know if there was something coming my way. I was...
Further comments from the council? Public comment for this agenda item? Anything you'd like to add? Administrator Hunter?
No, it was great last year. I look forward to going again this year.
Okay, back, back to us. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number six?
Item number six, public hearing and final passage to amend the zoning and land use code for the purposes of corrections, clarifications, and changes for definitions, administration and enforcement, appeals and variances, district regulations, performance standards, development review and standards, and significant buildings and standards. Requested action: that the proposed amendments to Appendix A, Article 2, definitions, Article 5, administration and enforcement, Article 9, appeals and variances, Article 11, district regulations, Article 12, district perform, district standards, Article 13, development review and standards, and Article 15, significant buildings and districts of the city's zoning and land use code for the purposes of corrections, clarifications, and changes to these sections, received final passage by a roll call vote.
Madam Clerk, Counselor Scott, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion from the council? But maybe before that, Director Hediger, is there anything you'd like to start us off with?
Second reading for you folks, unanimous approval from the planning board. Again, a lot of this was housekeeping changes, some of it was correcting errors and typos in there, as well as some streamlining to make things both easier for staff and the public. I can get into specifics if you folks are interested.
Discussion from the council? Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I just would like to thank the planning board for going through all of this and cleaning it up, and good job. Thank you.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Thank you very much, planning board. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number seven?
Item number seven, adoption of a new city policy regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion. Requested action: to adopt a new city policy, Policy Number 19, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Policy, as recommended by City Administration.
Madam, yes, Counselor Herrmann, thank you. Madam, second?
Second.
Counselor Jelineus? Director Hugh would like to come to the podium, or you could sit here, too.
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to start us off with?
Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Is this good for everyone?
Yep. I just thought it would be very important to talk about why this policy was created in the first place, and give you guys a little update about what's been going on. First and foremost, I do want to acknowledge all the City of Lewiston staff for taking all of these trainings. We've done 1,079 trainings so far, and the Public Works PD, Fire Department Library, Rec. Department City Hall has just been absolutely welcoming and totally inclusive and open-minded to all these trainings. We've done trainings in respects to respectful communication, staying safe and respectful in the field, and preventing discrimination, harassment, both for employees and managers. We've done interactive presentation tailored to each department, because no department is the same, and DEI is not in generalization. So we've done equity trainings and figured out niche ways to interact with each department. Our next round of trainings will deal with microaggression and cross-cultural connections. We will be conducting a survey around inclusivity in a sense of belonging, but most importantly, about the needs of our staff and employees. So these questions would be geared towards employee engagement, and we're going to talk about higher education in a sense of certification and professional development pathways within the City of Lewiston, financial management, and also coping and burnout and emotional stability, because we do understand that we are in a competitive market, and inflation is very high. We have varying income levels for all employees, and we're seeking to manage that and retain the employees that we do have, as well as making ourselves more attractive to other employees that wish to join the City of Lewiston. We have conducted prospective trainings with higher leadership, and all of them have done so, so I applaud them all for doing it. It ranged between an hour to three hours, where we talked about implicit bias, confirmation bias, proximity bias, perspective versus behavioral challenges that people may be seeking. I think at this point, you're probably wondering if everything is going so great, why am I creating a policy? Well, I think as great as Lewiston is, and as much as we are moving forward, we must acknowledge the problems that are still being had. So far, we've had seven potential discrimination cases, five hostile work environment cases, two potential harassment cases. According to the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's discrimination settlement will charge you about $40,000. A hostile work environment settlement is about $40,000, and a harassment settlement is about $53,000. So the Lewiston tab right now is at $760,000, but we were able to mitigate that, so take a look at that for your return on your investment. Along with these numbers, there are concrete stories that people have utilized this office for, to state their claim and open up, and we've created a very strong open space for this. So we've had stories of minority employees having their boots glued to the floor and perspective hazing, and they were not able to sustain employment due to mental health. We've had the N-word being used twice in my presence, with no malicious intent, but that just tells you of how far we have to go. We've had discrimination beyond race due, an employee came in, and he was there for 30 years, off of genetic information. After training, he sought me, and he wanted a little bit of advocacy in ways that he didn't feel HR was hearing, and we were able to fix that for him. We've had an employee here for 14 years, who, when he first started, he took out a bank loan to receive certain trainings that were given to other employees. He was the first employee of color in that department, but he said that after 14 years, he feels very included, and I just want him to be proud of the city that he's working for. We've had conversations about LGBTQ rights, and we have had people come into the office seeking advocacy and seeking a safe space to vent about problems that they are having. And I think the hardest conversations to have thus far is for the employees who do not see representation within the municipality. They are coming from a fear-based mentality, where they are scared that the content of their character won't be assessed properly, and that their work ethic won't shine despite their genetic makeup. So when one employee of color is released, it signals a fear within them to come to the office and ask if they're the next to be had. Again, that is nothing to say to how kind our city staff is, but this is where we are at, and this is where we're lagging. This policy comes from all the conversations that we've had thus far, and I think it's important, when we're agreeing to disagree, to also search for the commonalities that we're having. So people are saying, Melissa, you know, I just admire people for doing their job, and I'm going to treat them as such. And we have other employees saying, I hope that I'm being treated well because of my work ethic. And this DEI policy shines a light on that. I think it's a way to take in everything that people have said, and they're willing to abide by. It's a civility policy in its simplest form, and it's concrete and it's tangible, and it's a way to hold people just a little bit more accountable to the words that are being used. So most corporations have an organizational standard, and I think this represents that. It's a complement to the personnel policy that we already have, and I'm sure that you all read the Personnel Policy 60 pages, and you will see that it echoes, but nothing in the personnel policy speaks to what's in the DEI policy currently. I think we can celebrate individualities, and we can celebrate perspectives and lived experiences as much as we want, but we need uniformity when it comes to a certain goal and a certain code of conduct that we want to attribute to the City of Lewiston, and that's what this policy seeks to do. We do it time and time again. You would look at the U.S. Constitution as something, we just pledged the flag. So it's things like that that create a cohesive environment when everybody is seeking to acknowledge their difference in perspectives and lived experience. So, with that being said, I will leave it open to questions that you may have.
Thank you, Director Hugh. Your position, this policy and the work that you're doing, is long overdue, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Herrmann?
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I just wanted to thank city staff and especially Director Hugh for putting this policy together. In reading through it, it's all really, it's all really basic things that we should be doing anyway, but sometimes it is necessary and important to put it down on paper so we have something to refer to, to remind us of the direction we should be heading in. And as you alluded to, it's really important, especially in today's labor market, to make sure we are as, as competitive and open and attractive to all candidates as we can be. I did have one question about, it does say in the, on the first page that this policy applies to all employees, elected officials, appointed officials, volunteers, and representatives. And then the word employees is used many times throughout. I just wanted to clarify, does the entire policy apply to elected officials as well?
Yes. I think it's really important to highlight the highest form of leadership. I, to my understanding, working in the municipality for about 10 months, you all receive an orientation, and I think these initiatives should be presented to the elected officials, because that's how we disseminate information and we conduct leadership. So absolutely, it applies.
Thank you. Counselor.
Counselor Jelineus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Hugh, for your presentation here. I have a few prepared remarks, and I'll preface these remarks by saying that I'm not inherently opposed to some of the basic premises that have been presented in this policy, but there are a number of questions that I think need answering before we, as a body, vote this policy up or down. I would suggest we need to understand the ripple effect of the entire policy. Now, a number of people have raised concerns to me since the introduction of this agenda item late this past Friday afternoon. The first contact, in the constituents' words, not mine, until not very long ago, Lewiston was a place where people treated each other with civility and fairness, simply because it was the right thing to do. I will even go further and say that this quality was something that continued to define Lewiston even as it, even as its prosperity waned. Although it is impossible to expect younger city leaders, or those who are new to the city, to recognize, let alone fully appreciate, this historical, cultural, community value, there are still many people involved in city governance who know better, but have chosen to go along with agenda-driven movements to change or fix things that weren't broken to begin with. Equity and diversity issues are already mandated and protected by the law at every level. Lewiston's HR Department, as well as other departments, are already following these laws. No one has claimed otherwise. Identity groups or affinity groups do not apply for positions individuals do. Qualifications, experience, and expertise to do, best do the job must be the priority in hiring and promoting. This should be, rather, should not be colorblind. U.S. law prohibits consideration of race, gender, age, et cetera, when evaluating a candidate's suitability for any position.
Um, you know, I will say that, you know, I think about our city's rich diversity and I think about this and how beautifully it complements really what we already have in place. Um, that's really important. I've heard it said, you know, why are we doing something that's already mandated? Why are we doing something that's already happening? You know, and you know, what, the example I use is, you know, I, in my uh, agency, you know, I have my employees take all the trainings that you've referenced, really important for them. I believe that knowledge is power, comes at a better place of understanding and I, you know, I think workplace culture, whether you're thinking about diversity, all of that is so important. And so it's not like you're trying to create a problem that doesn't exist, it's that you're trying to like really uh, make a stand on things that are important. Workplace culture is important. Um, so I just wanna say thank you to you and to the staff for putting together something that is so important. Um, I just think this kind of work, you know, we, we have made progress, like you said, but uh, continued restoration is, is needed for sure. So thank you for this work.
Oh, absolutely.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I too wanna thank you for this great work. And I did wanna point out that when we're looking at this policy, particularly the line that says, "This policy is intended to complement the pre-existing personnel and ethics policy." And I think that's the important piece here, that we're looking at this as a compliment to what the work we're already doing and that this is good work being done in our community. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scott.
Further comment from the council? Um, Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director, for your presentation here. Um, I have a few prepared remarks and I'll profess, uh, preface these remarks by saying that I'm not inherently opposed to some of the basic premises that have been presented in this policy, but there are a number of questions that I think need answering before we as a body vote this policy up or down. I would suggest we need to understand the ripple effect of the entire policy. Now, a number of people have raised concerns to me since the introduction of this agenda item late this past Friday afternoon. The first contact, in the constituents' words, not mine. Until not very long ago, Lewiston was a place where people treated each other with civility and fairness, simply because it was the right thing to do. I will even go further and say that this quality was something that continued to define Lewiston even as it, it's even as its prosperity waned. Although it is impossible to expect younger city leaders or those who are new to the city to recognize, let alone fully appreciate, this historical, cultural, community value, there are still many people involved in city governance who know better, but have chosen to go along with agenda-driven movements to change or fix things that weren't broken to begin with. Equity and diversity issues are already mandated and protected by the law at every level. Lewiston's HR department, as well as other departments, are already following these laws. No one has claimed otherwise. Identity groups or affinity groups do not apply for positions, individuals do. Qualifications, experience and expertise to do, best do the job must be the priority in hiring and promoting. This should be, uh, rather should not be colorblind. US law prohibits consideration of race, gender, age, et cetera, when evaluating a candidate's suitability for any position, yet it sounds like the City of Lewiston is increasingly moving toward creating a segregated, parallel system that will contradict and undermine the importance of established law, as well as ease the way to make employees guilty of crimes that they have actually not committed. Another individual presented these two ideas, that I have concerns regarding the adoption of a new city policy regarding diversity, equity and inclusion, which is on tonight's agenda. This document is unnecessary, divisive, extremely redundant of federal and state law and ought not to pass. I see its sole purpose as being the cornerstone of arbitrary and very subjective costly lawsuits and busy work for justifying and expanding the DEI department, that is, if it is a department. And that was the end of the comments. Now, as, the answers to why this policy is actually necessary don't seem to be contained in whole within the policy itself and the council was not consulted before presentation. I think we should have sat down perhaps and discussed this issue. Absent that, I'm not sure that I can support passage as presented. My thank you.
May I?
Director Hugh, would you like to respond?
Sure. Um, I think the first comment that you read was amazing. Um, she should probably get a law degree if she hasn't gotten it yet.
I promised Mother I'd make an honest living. Thank you.
Yeah, no, she's amazing. But the civility and the fairness aspect, I just wanted to break it down, what she's saying currently. Um, you are one hundred percent right when it comes to the City of Lewiston. And I will say for sure, I am not from here. I am from a state down under and our policies run a little bit differently, but living here, I think, has been the best experience and working here has been the best experience. When it comes to civility and fairness, I think it has been implicated throughout, but we must acknowledge the historical downward spiral that we have had. When it comes to the French Canadians and the Somalis being here, we have had to work at every cornerstone to build that civility and fairness in Lewiston and we must acknowledge that as well. When it comes to um, laws only as good, laws are only as good as people who are enforcing them. We do have them, but it's reactionary. I think this is important because it's preventative. It's a preventative measure that says these are the expectations, so therefore we mitigate all of these things that are happening. Um, when it comes to our hiring process, it is colorblind. It is a colorblind process. Um, there is no assessment being done based off of protected class, only assessment being done based off of the work that you're providing and the education level and the ability to do the job. And I can say first and foremost that every director and supervisor abide by those rules and HR is in every meeting to make sure that is being enforced. Um, when it comes to this policy being divisive, I would gently push back on that because it's an umbrella effect. We're talking about people who are individuals and divided by their own characteristics. And the idea behind it is to create an umbrella approach where we all agree on civility in its simplest form. I can't build inclusivity here. We can't have full integration without the agreement on civility first and foremost. It doesn't have anything to do with personal beliefs or things that were done in the past, but it has an agreement to the, today's present that says that we, as the City of Lewiston, have been acting this way. We think this way, therefore we want a policy or creating a policy that says that we are abiding by this for newcomers coming in and for people to feel comfortable when they're here. Thank you.
Counselor P., or Counselor P., you are now recognized.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Director. Um, yeah, I've been looking at a bunch of different uh, manuals and programs that said, "We already do this." And we started training already on this?
So we have started our first round of trainings when it comes to discrimination. There's gonna be biannual trainings taking place within the City of Lewiston. Um, as for we already doing the things in this policy, if you look at the Personnel Policy, which I did print out, I don't wanna read everything that is in that policy. We would be here for days. Or even um, the highlighted things, but none of them corresponds with the idea of civility and expectation and the standard of being in the code of conduct here that most organizations do have. And I will say it's a bit different because we are in a municipality and Lewiston is the first of its kind to do this. So we will have hiccups along the way, but to serve the employees inside and have that project outside, it's important to have people coming in, understand that we have a standard here that we abide by and we will treat you as no matter what it is. So I don't want it to get convoluted in the nitty-grittiness of um, discrimination laws and um, things governed by the Human Rights Commission or the Civil Acts, right, of nineteen sixty-four. Those are there in law, but they are for reactionary purposes. These are for prevention. These are for expectations and the standard of being.
Isn't that part of your training that you're doing?
It is part of the training and I hope that what happens is when people are coming in, it mitigates the response for people using foul language or racial slurs ahead of time so that we're not taking too much time in trainings. Again, our employees are doing phenomenal work. They are in this inclusivity. They want to interact with the community, do this cultural competency work. This is just a highlighted form saying that when you're entering into the city government and when you are coming into the clerk's office asking for certain things and you're suffering from a language barrier, do not worry because there is a form of conduct that we will abide by that is non-discriminatory and we will treat you with the respect that you deserve when you're here.
So if that, if I understand this correctly, uh, when you say that, it's going to be, if somebody comes into the city clerk's office and wanting to do something, uh, and uh, their language is not uh, English, different English, are we gonna have somebody there to be able to translate? Are we gonna start hiring other people to do that? And how, and how are we gonna advertise that?
Well, I wish I ran the budget because I would, but um, when it comes to outreach, we have been doing intensive outreach. Um, we have been at hiring fairs. We hi- um, we have screened seven people on site for those fairs. Now, we also do language services and um, we have a language line that we're using for interpretation needs. Um, we're not necessarily seeking to hire um, people that speak different languages, but if they do come, that is something that we will be one hundred percent grateful for. Um, we just wanna make the most inclusive environment with what we have right now and hope that we can build upon that later.
Yeah, well, I, I just think it's a little bit of waste of time, to be honest, because we've been doing this for years and uh, I think it's redundant, really.
And, and I totally respect that and I don't think this position is here to continue to do work that we've been doing for years. I think it's meant to be a little bit disruptive in nature. So when we're seeking and we're looking and reassessing and again, I've been here ten months of observation, so I can't make miracles happen within that period of time, but when we're seeking to do it, we're being extremely intentional to be inclusive. And I think to have a certain policy, whether you call it DEI or not, that has a code of conduct and the standard of treatment is very important.
I, uh, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Hugh, for coming. Um, I have a plethora of questions for you. Um, I'm gonna just go page by page. Hit me right off at the beginning saying we've had over one thousand sessions or a little over one thousand sessions um, on training already on equity and diversity. Um, is this um, is this on city time session? How, how are these sessions, is this overtime material for people? How is these sessions coming about?
It's not overtime, it's on city time. Um, one of these discrimination and harassment trainings replaced our old sexual harassment training and it has been updated because of that. Um, and I think to that end, that answers that question. There's no taking overtime to do these trainings currently.
Okay, thank you. Um, on, under purpose, um, I just want clarification and that's on the first page, down at the bottom, last sentence. "We believe that it, that to be a more effective municipality, our workforce must represent individuals with backgrounds, cultures and traditions that reflect our city's rich diversity." Um, am I to take that, that we are looking for quotas for people to work in our city? Are we not looking for the best qualified person? We're just looking for somebody that fit that quota?
Yeah, well, diversity isn't diversity in composition, it's also diversity in thought. So we're looking for people with the best all-around perspectives to do these jobs. So no, we're not looking at it based off of a lens of just color.
I didn't, I didn't bring up color. You brought up color.
Quota, quota signifies color.
Quota could be male, female, dog, cat, whatever the case may be. So we're, this is, this is saying quota. This is not saying the best qualified person.
No, you said quota. I'm saying this is just the best diverse perspect- perspectives all around, so that's what we're engaging with. I don't want it to be things that you see with the naked eye as just representing diversity.
So if I'm looking for an engineer and this person is just the, the best graduated high honors for an engineer and um, might be a difficult person to get along with, no question about it. Then we get somebody that graduated D in their class as an engineer, um, and that person might have some um, differences that would fit the, I wanna quote this correctly, um, background, cultures and traditions that reflect the city's rich diversity. So we would opt not to take the higher qualified individual and go with the other individual that is not as qualified because they have um, a more diverse background.
How would we know? How would we know unless we asked? And these questions aren't being asked during um, um, interviews at all. We're not asking about their um, heritage or their culture or things like that, their blanket, black and white questions that we're asking to all employees. We don't even know how agreeable they are until they start working, so we can't even say that they're difficult.
That's not what that says. It says that we're looking for, I, I won't debate that subject. We'll just move on to the next page.
Okay.
Okay. I, I've noticed, um, yes, and I, I did read the Personnel Policy fifty-four pages long, which was, put me to sleep many nights, so I thank the City of Lewiston for writing that.
Amen to that.
I got to sleep, uh, sleep well. Um, in code of diversity, provide all employees with a safe avenue to voice concerns regarding diversity, equity, inclusion in our workplace. Uh, sup- uh, support flexible work arrangements. Um, I've noticed, I've highlighted a bunch of place on, a bunch of places on here, on proper trainings and education. Um, that's in section two, two, two point two, and I, I can go through them. I'm questionable for, and one of them, further education, training and more. What is um, the diversity training and development strategies? And if somebody is not following it, they can go for extra training to build awareness and diversity during onboarding. What is that training? Is this, is this training a, for the lack of a better term, forgive my ignorance on the subject, a, is there a handbook that's, that's a nationally accepted training program? Or what is this training? And what, do you have something that breaks down what that training is?
One hundred percent. So we've partnered with a great vendor called Tralian and they are nationwide recognized. Um, they have probably one of the most engaging trainings that you can have and they have a plethora of trainings that we can go through depending on what is happening with that employee. And these trainings can be options. Right now, um, I've heard from one employee who said, you know, "I wish this was here before because it was a reprimand. I didn't have the option to get more education and then not take that reprimand." And so that allowed for a lot more leniency and I think education is the key at this point. We don't wanna punish people for things that they don't know. We definitely wanna educate them and seek that they have some type of awareness to the situations.
I wasn't ignoring you, I just.
No, it's okay.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to see some of that training.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, we, you also, we also talk about here, um, on reporting requirements, uh, section four, four point two, the City of Lewiston will maintain confidential employment diversity database restricted to authorized staff for the purpose of engaging in activities related to advancing diversity achievements. What does that mean?
That means I am not telling you anything that happens in the DEI office that is confidential. If somebody is in my room and they are doing a training with me or they are seeking assistance or they want to vent, nobody has the right to hear what is being said, know what is being said. We are safeguarding our employees and um, their interactions with whatever they choose to say to the DEI office.
Okay. And not last but least, um, focus groups. I noticed we have someone there. You and I have had the pleasure of discussing how miserable I feel the school department's has on a couple of their focus groups. Um, is this focus group going, any of these focus groups going to exclude anybody?
Absolutely not. So the purpose of focus groups are not to be exclusionary by any protected class whatsoever. They're meant to amplify the voices and create an open amount of support. I think focus groups existed before focus groups were defined, but they were just hidden. We just create a platform for them that say, "We will support these engagements regardless."
Are these focus groups gonna be meeting on city time or is this something that's after hours that employees want to join and be a part of? How does this work?
Well, yeah, absolutely. Um, we haven't had any focus groups yet and I don't think we'll have any in the near future just yet, but we do have, um, we're building inclusivity with our employees and we do have things like softball tournaments that we're talking about doing that um, will be off of city time. Focus groups would generally be off of city time, but they're not paid. You don't go to a focus group and it's overtime. That's not what's happening. It's more so like a supportive club that you're creating. Um, again, I don't foresee that being, happening right now. We only have three hundred and thirty employees and they are very stretched thin, but we do like to create the option for all employees.
And I have, um, I'm sorry, just trying to follow up. It's, I'm, as we have discussed, I have major problems with affinity groups.
Oh, I knew it. I knew this was coming. I did.
Well, why would it come? The language is in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can only glean what is on the paper. I can't read between the lines.
Yeah.
So that's my job to ask and to represent my constituents asking these questions.
One hundred percent.
Because some of these affinity groups are not acceptable. I have problems with, I, I, I have problems with some of the trainings that have come down with diversity and equity. I don't know if this is one of the training prob- eh, training issues. So I'm having a hard time approving this without getting further information in regarding to training or any of this, uh, those issues. We have, as a council, we have approved and reaffirmed our commitment to diversity and equity. I also wanna represent everybody and make sure everybody is accepted and not, um, that nobody is, um, deemed unworthy because of the color of their skin. Nobody.
I.
And I support that a hundred percent and you and I have had that conversation. Um, so for me, I would need more information before I would vote in favor of something like this. More information in, particularly in regards to the training, um, what that training consists of. And we've mentioned it, there's like seven different places, the training, and it came back to even, um, uh, further education and training and more. Or what does the "and more" mean? And it says, "Please refer to the City of Lewiston's personal uh, policy for more detail." I did. Um, so basically they could be fired and there's a whole litany of things, uh, which anybody would have to go through that personnel if they miss, were not an upstanding employee anyway. So I, I would need more information on this.
And I would be happy to have you go through one of the Tralian trainings as well as the in-person perspective training.
I'm sure you would be happy, but I would be happier if I got the information before I would be able to make a decision on that.
Which was gonna be my next statement. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Further comment from the council?
Further comment from the council? Counselor Scott.
Thank you. So, I understand that there may be some questions on this, but I would like to reiterate that, as Director Hugh has stated, this is an umbrella policy that includes exclus, it includes coverage for everybody, everybody. And I don't see this as just being something that has to do with the color of somebody's skin. It has to do with women in the workplace. It has to do with LGBTQ. It has to do with a lot more than just one thing. When I look at this as being a code of conduct, a standard of treatment, and then I also know that I have friends, I have family members, I have close friends, and a family member, a person that I love that calls me mom, that still, to this day, gets treated because of the color of their skin a different way. When I have a best friend who is actually a very well-known and respected person in this community, can't go to the post office without being screamed at to take off something off of her head and to go back to her country, we need something like this in our community. We need to continue this work in our community. I am a, a French descendant who I know what happened when my family members came here. I know the discrimination they received. But in my personal opinion, that stuff that we were able to get through, this is not something that's just going away. It is happening still every day, and we need to recognize it, and I fully support this, one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scott.
Further comment from the council? Counselor Jalinas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just encourage us to think about diversity in, in different ways. You know, most of you know that I am a mom of children of color. And, but when I use the word diversity, I, I use it much more broadly than that. Diversity means, you know, you take food through your mouth, I might take it through a G-tube. Diversity means you might access the playground on your feet, I'm going to do it in my wheelchair. Diversity means I'm going to use my voice to speak, I might use my hands and communicate to you with sign language. And I think sometimes we get too caught up in that, you know, it's, it's really, it's broader than that. I think this is so important. And as someone for the past, uh, let's see, I'm going to age myself, thirty-five years, have raised children of color in this community and have witnessed horrific things with them, really horrific things. I'm not going to go into it, but I will say that I have. I can't thank you enough for this work. I've lived it every day. I work in the schools, in and out, every day. So, I thank you for this. I also just want to say that, you know, I do the same work in my own agency, and I don't, I don't separate this from anything different than a policy would have on harassment, right? I require the training, I require the hours of attendance at these trainings, I require the policy, I require the discussions. It doesn't mean that the policy's not important, or that we're not doing the work already day-to-day in the agency. It just means that we're, we're putting it in print. This is no different. And I think, you know, we can get hung up on a lot of this, and, but I, I don't think it's that complicated. So, again, I would just say thank you, Director Hugh.
And I thank you so much for your comments, Counselor Jalinas. And as you mentioned, look, at the end of the day, everybody's lived experiences is very different, okay? She mentioned things, everybody's mentioned things that they've seen that's horrific. Unfortunately, people dropping the N-word in front of you is also horrific. You have to absorb the ins and outs in this job every single day. And I'm just trying to create a pathway for acceptance for every individual. It's a tough job, being in a majority state, trying to enact change on systems that some don't see as broken, which evidently are very, very, very broken, if you choose to see it or not.
Thank you for saying that.
One hundred percent. But I do not believe in exclusionary tactics. This is exactly what that is. It's a full-on umbrella approach to say that, look, we all have different perspectives, but at least, at least through kindness and civility, we can agree that we have a standard of treatment for everybody else to allow their work ethic to shine and to hold people accountable to a certain measure.
Uh, Counselor. Counselor Clement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hugh, as I said when I started my remarks, I am not opposed to many things in this policy. I think we should have sat down and had a, a sit-down and talked about this. I remember an incident earlier this year where a similar thing, maybe in reverse, was taken up, and, no, no, that's not going to fly. Well, to get this information on a Friday afternoon and then get contacted over the weekend by people, hey, why, why are we doing all this? Can't tell you why we're doing all this, because nobody's told me. So, that being the case, if we can't have a sit-down, discuss this, and get answers to these various questions, I just don't see how I can support it. I probably will support it in the end. But I have been through, as an employer, I went through the affirmative action thing, the reverse affirmative action thing, and those are some very hurtful things to people in our, in our country, and some of our professional people. I have some beliefs that when it comes to hire, you should hire the best possible person, period. End of sentence, right there. You don't go out looking beyond that. You get the best possible person. Now, that person may have some rough edges you may have to work with, but so be it. I just don't think that you go out looking for, I know, somebody used the word quotas. I don't know that that is being done, but I can understand where people are thinking that. The words that I brought up here tonight were two different people in the community that communicated things to me, and this is what people are thinking. A lot of people have not commu, now, I'm not going to get involved, I don't want to get involved in that, okay? That is part of what I consider my job, is to bring these issues up. I don't bring them up because of personal belief, although in some instances, personal beliefs are, are there. In this particular case, I mouthed what a couple of constituents had to say. And I, I've got to question some of these things. Counselor LaChapelle brought up an issue. Under inclusion, you say inclusion is a two-way, is two-way accountability. And we have evidence that that's not true in areas of the city. And for trying to bring that out, several of us have been castigated, okay? We represent, I feel, all of the people of Lewiston. We represent taxpayers, we represent parents of children in the school system, everybody. And we were trying to bring forth a vessel, if you will, to carry a message to the body that can handle those types of things. And it ended up quite differently than our intention. But until we can sit down and discuss this and find out just what's really going on, I see some things in here. You talk about enforcement, sanctions. What, what type of sanctions? Are you referring to another policy when you're, when you're going to employ sanctions? Once again, you know, I, I don't believe in hiring anybody but the most qualified. We talk about things like gender-inclusive language. I believe that should already be codified, and if not, why is it not codified? I haven't had the time to look at each and every policy. I have looked at the personnel policy in the past. I didn't go back to it today, because I have another issue that'll be coming later tonight that's going to be most interesting, I'm sure. One thing that, that I have a question on still, and nobody has been able to answer this, and I have talked to some people, I've read a bunch of stuff on it, the word equity. Equity to me, I, I mean, I, I use a very simple definition. You have two words, you have equality, you have equity. Equality has to do with opportunity. We are an equal opportunity employer, okay? Equity has to do with outcome. Does that mean we have to be an equal outcome employer? Does that mean that everybody that applies gets a job? I, I mean, these, these are questions that I think deserve an answer. And until I get those answers, I'm just not comfortable moving ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor LaChapelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I was, it, it just hit me a moment ago when Director Hugh made the statement, "So, if people see things differently, they, they're wrong anyways." And I, I, I'm paraphrasing it, but I was rather offended by that comment myself.
I didn't say that.
I'm sorry, I'm.
I'm sorry, I did not say that at all.
Excuse me.
Did I give you an opportunity to speak?
Go ahead, I did not say that.
I appreciate that.
Please continue, Counselor LaChapelle.
Thank you. So, with that, I guess, uh, we can debate this back and forth. I don't have enough information on this. I voted, you, this council voted unanimously to support and approve what Council Hammond brought up, the diversity and equity statement. I'm all for it. I need more information. So, at this point, I make the motion that we table this indefinitely, and that would be my motion on the floor.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, Madam Clerk, we need a majority to, we need a supermajority to, to table it?
No.
So, the motion is to postpone indefinitely, and it's just a majority vote?
Okay.
Yes. And just for clarification, I'm sorry, it was moved by Counselor LaChapelle, seconded by Counselor Clement?
I'll second it, yes.
Oh, I apologize, I didn't catch you seconding it, thank you.
And any discussion on this particular motion?
No, there's no discussion. Point of order.
Uh, Madam Clerk, we have a point of order. What is germane to this current motion?
Sure, uh, the, there, it, this motion is debatable, according to the chart in Robert's rules. It is debatable, and so, again, it would be, but it is limited to should this pending matter be killed, which is basically to postpone indefinitely. Should it be killed, or should it move forward?
Counselor Herman, uh, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say that the, the time is now to pass this. We don't really need to wait around any longer and allow more people to be hurt by, by divisive language and conduct. I think this is very basic, just basic civility and how we treat each other, and it seems like it should be, should be second nature. Unfortunately, sometimes it isn't. Thank you.
Question on the order, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, we have another point of order, go ahead, um, Counselor.
Well, not so much a point of order, but a question on the order. If this is tabled indefinitely, it can be brought back as a different item anytime in the future, is that not correct?
That is correct, that is my understanding of Robert's rules, yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clement. Uh, Counselor McCarthy, did you have?
That was my question.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I support the concept behind this, but I need, I need more information.
Further, uh, counsel, uh, comment on this? Yeah, I, I do not support tabling this at all. I really think we should definitely go to public comment and, and then have a vote. Counselor Herman.
Thank you. I don't know if this was, this is a question for city staff. Wasn't this policy emailed to us a few months ago for consideration? Or am I, I may be thinking of a different one?
I believe you may be thinking of a different one.
Okay, thank you.
Further, uh, comment on this agenda, uh, on the current motion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Uh, Counselor from word.
Uh, Ma- Madam Clerk, for clarification purposes, can you please restate the, the motion and then call the vote?
Sure, the motion is to postpone this matter indefinitely. Counselor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
No.
Word one?
No.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
No.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of four to three.
Uh, we tabled it before, uh, public comment, um, yeah. I'll just say that if we were a table at a job fair, they all went to, they all went somewhere else. Madam Clerk, next agenda item.
Item number eight, approval.
Do you get to add commentary? Am I allowed to add commentary also? That was very inappropriate, Mr. Mayor. If you want to have a commentary, please give me the opportunity to have commentary. Not one time did we say, "I do not support this." I just want more information. I encourage Director Hugh to go back and get that information, and please come back to us. I'm not saying no, and I, I take offense to these sly remarks that you sit up here and make after, and don't give us an opportunity. That was solely inappropriate. Maybe I should go say, "Director Hugh," and say, "My feelings are hurt on this," and see where we should move forward. That's inappropriate.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clement, I'm recognizing you.
Under points of order, order from Robert's rules, what you did is unacceptable, and I'm calling you on it. And if it continues, I will put it to a vote, a vote of this body, to call you out of order. You can go to the floor, and you can make any comment you want, but sitting as the chair of this body, you cannot sit there and deliberate and make snide comments. I too found that offensive. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, next agenda item.
Sure, item number eight, approval of a utility easement to Central Main Medical Center to install a steam pipe in the sidewalk of Hammond Street. Requested action to approve a utility easement to Central Main Medical Center on Hammond Street and authorize the city administrator to execute the documents.
So, the message?
Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor Herman, I believe? Uh, discussion on this matter? Uh, we, uh, sorry, Engineer Bowley?
Hi, I'm, uh, here to answer questions if you have any.
Discussion from the counselor, questions? Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have any concerns on this?
No, no concerns. Hospital approached us, uh, they really have no other choice. Their existing line goes under their oxygen tank, uh, the building is right at the back of the sidewalk. We're coordinating it with the paving work we're doing on Hammond and Lowell, so it won't, it'll be done before the sidewalk is reconstructed, so we have no concerns.
So, there's no downside?
No what?
No downside.
Really not, no?
Great, thank you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. And just to follow up on Counselor McCarthy's questions, is there, is the street going to be closed in that particular area?
Uh, no, there's no.
It doesn't have to be, right, I just was double-checking.
No.
Okay, great.
This work is just in the sidewalk on the edge.
That's what I thought, thank you.
We're now heading, heading to public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And word five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number nine.
Item number nine, resolve renewing and extending the mutual cooperation agreement between the City of Lewiston and the City of Auburn to form a consortium under the Federal Home Investment Partnership Program. Requested action to approve the resolve renewing and extending the mutual cooperation agreement between the City of Lewiston and the City of Auburn to form a consortium under the Federal Home Investment Partnership Program and to authorize the city administrator to execute the same.
Uh, Counselor Peeve? Followed by Counselor McCarthy. And Director Jeffers, it would, do you want to start us off?
Sure, and just very briefly, this is really, for the most part, a renewal of a agreement between the cities of Lewiston and Auburn that's been in place since two thousand and one. The cities get an allocation of home dollars, which can only be used to really support their creation or upgrading of, of low-income housing. We typically, we use it for supporting construction of new multifamily buildings, but we've also used it in the past for capitalizing loan programs for buildings that loan to moderate-income people live in. We also have, uh, used it for financing, uh, low-income homeowners, loans to them to help them fix up their properties. We've used it for security deposits for the homeless. We get about a half a million dollars a year that gets split between the two cities. Ten percent of that can be used for administrative costs. The one change from this particular one I'm asking you to renew, then from the past, it used to be that four percent of that ten percent, we go to Lewis, excuse me, to Auburn directly, because they're the lead organization, they're the ones who handle most of the administrative burden on this, and we would split the remaining six percent. This agreement, because they're picking up a higher level of, of administrative work, primarily doing underwriting and subsidy layering, which is pretty time-consuming and very technical. primarily doing underwriting and subsidy layering, which is pretty time-consuming and very technical on the housing projects, they're asking for five percent, and we would split the remaining two and a half percent. The net impact to the city, if we use the half a million dollars of home dollars, instead of getting fifteen thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars of administrative expenses, we get twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. So it's a relatively small change as far as the revenues received, and it's a really good program that's allowed us to fund lots of things we cannot otherwise do. For that, up for questions?
Counselor McCarthy?
Why is, why is it that the, oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, sorry. Why is it the cities themselves don't qualify, they have to join together to make that qualification?
Under the federal rules, you have to be a certain-sized community, and neither city on their own is large enough. The only place in the state of Maine that is, is Portland.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Further comments from the counsel? Public comment on this agenda item? Back to the counsel? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
And Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number ten?
Item number ten, resolve adopting the Lewiston Leeds program, excuse me, adopting the Lewiston Leeds program. Requested action to adopt the Lewiston Leeds program to highlight individuals who are actively enhancing the vibrancy of Lewiston.
Counselor Pease, followed by Counselor LaChapelle? Discussion from the counsel? Counselor Scott?
Just a question for administration. When are we going to start this? I'd like the public aware. What date are we hoping?
We begin with the meeting in September.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you. That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the counsel? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number eleven?
Item number eleven, resolve authorizing acceptance of the Public Art Working Group recommendations for a youth public art mural proposals for the Choice Neighborhood. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing acceptance of the Public Art Working Group recommendations for a youth public art mural proposal for the Choice Neighborhood.
Have a motion. Counselor Herman?
Second.
Followed by Counselor Scott. Discussion, or, sorry, before counselors. Director Jeffers, would you like to?
Just very brief, this will be funded under the Choice Neighborhood grant. It's twelve thousand dollars. We had one proposal, it was received by an art teacher at the Longley High School, and we'll be working with youth in the community. It'll happen this summer. They'll be creating flags from various nationalities that live locally, and looking to just sort of link those together. And it'll be on the relatively low retaining wall. As you come up Bartlett Hill, just as you're approaching Birch, there's a low retaining wall. It used to be the backside of a multifamily. That's where it's going to be installed.
Thank you, Director. Discussion from the counsel? We're going to public comment on this for this agenda item? Back to the counsel? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number twelve?
Item number twelve, receipt of applications for consideration for nomination to the Andersgagen County Budget Committee. There are several items for requested action. We can, do you want me to try, we can walk you through, Mr. Mayor, or?
Yes, and if, yes, if you could walk through, that'd be great.
Sure. So the first item, and let me just sort of review this for you first. The first item is to receive the application submitted for consideration for nomination to the Andersgagen County Budget Committee. So just by way of background, and certainly I would welcome counselors Clement and Jelineh as returning counselors. If you attended the caucuses, please feel free to comment. I have not. So if you have firsthand experience, please feel free to comment. So every, I believe, three years, the county holds, forms a budget committee, and they meet from September to December-ish. And they have two representatives, two, and when I say representatives, meaning residents of the seven county wards. There are seven districts in the county. Lewiston is made up, Districts One and District Two in whole are both located in Lewiston. District Three is part of Lewiston as well as two other communities. So as such, the Lewiston City Council has the opportunity to submit nominations and then eventually vote on a ballot, which we'll get probably at the next meeting or the meeting after that, for appointments to represent Lewiston, being Districts One and District Two, to the County Budget Committee. So the county charter, the excerpt of the county charter is also in your packet, and the county charter language says that there shall be two representatives per district, and a minimum of one of those representatives must be a municipal officer. And they define municipal officer as mayor, council, or city administrator. And so in Janu, or December of this past year, when the city council sat down and assigned all of the representatives to the different boards and committees that council selected in December and codified and voted on in January, that Counselor Scott would be the Lewistons representative for District Two, and Counselor Pease would be for District One. So that was a decision that the council made, but in order to tie in with the timeframe of the district, someone would have to go to those caucuses that are tomorrow night, and we already, you already received the caucus notice that was forwarded by the city administrator, and nominate both of you as the minimum of the elected official representative. And then in addition to that, would be nominating a citizen representative. Now, I will clarify for you, and I apologize for the confusion. When we prepared your agenda material on Friday, in item number two, we kind of listed some potential options for you about submitting all names of the applicants as a full slate or just a handful, but in rereading, I just want to bring this to your attention, you have in your background material a page from the county charter. And in rereading that just before the meeting, it does state verbatim that nominate, that the purpose at the caucus is nominating two residents. Unfortunately, it does not say at least two residents. My recollection in the past, and that's why I'm sort of looking at some repeat counselors, my recollection in the past is that more names than just two have been submitted, and I believe it's been interpreted as at least two, but the verbatim language does say two. And then it also says that names can be for, brought up on the floor of the caucus. So I hesitate to answer too many official questions because it's in the realm of the county and not the city. So I'm not familiar with their procedure and process. But in strictly looking at the language from the county charter in your book, it says for the purpose of nominating two residents, and at least one must be a, an elected official. So it appears for this evening that the elected official per district and one resident per district could be determined. And then on the floor tomorrow night, you could receive direction from the county staff and county commissioners if additional names are permitted to be submitted on the floor. I will say that I pulled an old ballot from the last time, and there were definitely more than just two names on that ballot, which leads me to believe one of two things, that either additional names were submitted via this process, and it was interpreted to be at least, even though it didn't say that, or names were submitted on the floor. And again, it's not within the realm of the city control, so I hesitate to answer definitively because it really is a county operation. But the past ballots have had definitely more than two names per district. So it does appear that additional names are allowed to be submitted for nomination at some point, which appears to be on the floor of the caucus, which again is tomorrow evening at six o'clock at the county building.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. Counselor McCarthy?
My interpretation, moving forward to the next section, 555.2. The way that one reads, it says, "The municipal office, office, officials shall vote as a board for two budget committee members from the candidates on the ballot, and the municipal officers must vote for at least one candidate who is a municipal official." So it must mean there's more than selection of two names, because it wouldn't say that if it was, if you, if there was just two names, you'd vote for two up or down, so.
Right. And I don't disagree with you, Counsel, but if you look at the paragraph right above it, the third line, it starts with the word place, and it says, "For the purpose of nominating two residents of the district of voting age." So again, I don't want to be in the seat of interpreting the county charter, that's not the role of city staff. So we're just limited this evening to presenting to you what their written document says, and I just want to point out to you that the language does say two. It does not say at least two or a minimum of two. So I do apologize to you, that was just sort of, you know, I just sort of noticed that before your meeting. So the material that we prepared for you as city staff on Friday, item number two in the requested action box, does mention the potential of submitting a full slate, if you were interested. But in reading the county charter language, that section sounds like it's not possible, but it is certainly, the council is welcome to do what they'd like to do.
My suggestion is whoever gets elected, they change the language. Thank you.
Clarify, Mr. Mayor? Well, Counselor, Counselor Scott and then Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I have intended on being there tomorrow night at six o'clock, and I, presuming that when I'm looking at this, and if Counselor Pease is there with me, we both nominate ourselves, and then whoever you guys, we nominate tonight, would be the name that we put forward, moving forward. That would be my general understanding of this, and I'm feeling like I really don't know what's happening either. I'm sorry.
I would just read that you've got three names, two residents and an elected official in each district, the way I read this. And we don't have two names from each district that have applied.
Correct.
So I would say that the counselors that go to that meeting tomorrow night, you know, you look around, see who isn't there, and go ahead and nominate. Teach them not to show up to these important caucus meetings. But I think that's the way, and if I read everything that you put in here correctly, District Three does not get anybody this time out? Or just nobody applied from District Three?
No, no one applied for District Three, but I will also say that a very small portion of Lewiston is in County District Three. County District Three is made up of two other towns, which I believe, off the top of my head, is Turner and Green.
I think it's Durham and Green.
Durham and Green, okay. It's two other towns in the county, and a small portion of Lewiston.
The way I looked at their map today, it looks like the bulk of Ward Six is in that district.
Is in District Three?
Yeah, but the population in Ward Six is down. Their material indicates that roughly fifteen thousand people in each district. So District One and Two, I mean, One is very small, that's basically the downtown area of Lewiston. Two encompasses, I would guess from the quick looks of this, Wards Two, Four, and I'm not sure. Ward Seven is probably part of... Part of Two, I think, yeah. It tips in, but Ward Six is kind of out there all by itself, so. When I said this to none from Ward Six, I was wondering if our ward went unrepresented or something.
No one applied, and my recollection, Counselor, is in the past, the budget committee representatives from that district have not been from Lewiston, but have been from Durham or Green, those other communities within District Three.
I don't remember that we went through this last time. I think the pandemic had perhaps hit, and people were on mute and didn't volunteer and all sorts of things. If I never hear that again, you're on mute, I'll be happy.
And just for clarification for everyone, Districts One and Two are both wholly located within Lewiston?
Yes.
So are we, Madam Clerk, what is, what do you need from us at this point?
Sure, so we just wanted to provide that background to you, and certainly, you know, welcome others to clarify if staff does not have an understanding of that. But then, I think with that, Mr. Mayor, we can just kind of go through the four steps for requested action in your book. And the first one is to simply receive the application submitted for consideration for nomination to the County Budget Committee. And so we've provided those to you in your book, and as one of the counselors noted, four are from District One, one is from District Two, and there are zero from District Three.
Let's proceed with that.
Okay. So you've received those, so then the next one is to determine names of applicants to be submitted for nomination.
Counselor Herman?
I would submit the nomination of Alicia Ray for the District One position.
Are we voting on these people singly, or?
You can vote singly, yes. Again, I, I'm not sure if there's an understanding or agreement, and it's certainly up to the council if you're able to only submit one name of one resident or more than one name. And again, it's up to the discretion of the council. I'm just advising you how staff is sort of interpreting that.
Counselor LaChapelle has a question?
Would it be possible that we just appoint one name and then give our standby? If they find out tomorrow that they can appoint another name, then the council kind of agrees that this other person would be nominated? With that, so it wouldn't be an official, but I just, that's a...
It wouldn't be a standby, it would be a nomination from the floor.
Okay, so they can make, at least-
If there are other names you want to consider, they could nominate them from the floor tomorrow. So when the ballot comes back, you will see the multi, you know, whoever was nominated for that district.
So how do you want to proceed, Mr. Mayor, as far as, do you want us all just to make a suggestion on a name? Or how, what's your thought process?
Well, let's hear from down the line here for a second. Counselor Clement?
Why couldn't we just put all of these names in? My understanding is that the commissioners will take this tomorrow night. They can add, detract, they will set forth a ballot from names received. So why don't we just push everybody forward that had an indication that they wanted to serve, and let it go with that? That'd be the simplest way perhaps to do this.
That could certainly speed along this agenda item.
I'm all in favor for that, yes.
Counselor Herman?
My only concern is if, if there's confusion about whether we can submit more than one, then if we just put everybody through, then we don't have one chosen. But it does sound like we can submit more on the floor?
Yes.
So in that case, it does seem logical to just submit all the names that applied.
At this point, I'd like to go to public comment on this agenda item? Perhaps are we going to have a former commissioner shed some light?
Yes, I can be, I can be helpful. It's been six years since I've done-
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Oh, sorry, Matt Roy, Ward Three?
Thank you very much.
And former commissioner for District Three, so yes. Most, yeah, so I'm going to guess that the council president's the only one actually in Lewiston, in District Three. Just take it as-
Elected official.
Oh, yes, yes. Of the eight of you, you're the, I'm just going to guess.
I'm guessing.
Yeah, and then because there's a form where I want to get these districts that have more than one municipality, because the two, is it three or five? It's usually three or five for Board of Selectmen for a town, right there, Madam Clerk?
Correct, yes.
Yes, so the six of the ten between Durham and Green are going to outvote you.
I'm not going to be heard to outvote a commissioner.
Not in this case, but yeah, so that's, traditionally since under the 2012 charter, that's always been, from 2013, 2016, 2019, and then this year. More likely that, that's how that's going to work. Now, for each district, a county, the county commissioner runs that caucus. So it's going to be up to the county commissioner for District One, well, more District One, because District Two's going to be very simple. It's going to be the county, the municipal officer, and then there's only one citizen nomination. Unless somebody reaches out to you between now and 6:00 PM tomorrow night, which, that has happened. I think that's how it- has happened, I think that's how it worked for one of the District One and Two back in 2016. And I, if I remember prac, our practice as county commissioners when we, back in 2016, if there wasn't an actual nomination, no one actually applied through that municipality, or a, one of the municipalities within a district, the nomination, that's when the nominations in four were entertained, based on the beginning of 5-5-1, and the wording in the county charter, if I remember how 2016 went.
Thank you. Further public, or did you...
Yes, still public.
Or did you have a question for Mr. Roy? Further public comment on this agenda item? Back to the council? Counselor Pease?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am we going to, like, I've never been through this, but when we present this, do we present their application to the commission?
No, I believe you just present their name, Counselor Pease.
Just the name.
Yes, name and perhaps address, but yes, sir, just name, not their application, to my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Sorry, I feel like we still need a little more clarity on here. We present our name as well for our own vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so if I'm looking at this correctly, so we've got, we've got one, two, three, four names for District One, so if Larry, if, excuse me, if Counselor Pease is going to be there, I apologize, if Counselor Pease is going to be there tomorrow evening, he nominates himself, correct? And then he can nominate one of the names in the, if they're there, like, if they don't, if they show up, he could, you know what I mean? He can nominate a couple of names. I've only got the one, so I would nominate myself, and then the one person that's in that district, and I think that that might be the appropriate thing to do, but I'd like the council's response on that, because I've only got one in District Two besides myself, Does that make sense?
It does, excuse me, it does to me.
Okay.
Yeah, we can bring up a name now, vote on it, and I'll see about presenting the other names at the meeting.
If they allow it.
Yeah. Okay, I'm comfortable with that. I feel like I feel a little better about where we're going on this, and I'm not afraid to ask questions tomorrow evening if we have questions and figure this out, and report back to council.
No, you agree. And if I had, just I'd nominate Robert Reed for District One.
Madam Clerk, what do you need from us at this point?
So, at this point, Mr. Mayor, item four, which is to approve the resolve, which is in your book, with the last portion being to be filled in, basically on the floor, basically right now, so if the council is agreeable to the resolve as printed, and then they, there could be a motion and a vote to insert and fill that blank. Does that seem to make the most sense for the group?
Just for clarification, so at this point, we are not putting forth all the names, and we are just putting forth our two counselors, who would then fill it out on the floor with the floor nomination, or...
That's what it sounds like the discussion is, but again, it's up to the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Herman?
Thank you. So do we, we need to vote as a coun, excuse me, as a council on the nominations for the District One seat? I actually, I watched the city council meeting from 2019 when we did this, and, and that was what they did then, not saying that that was correct, but that's what they did then. I believe there were two people nominated for a particular district, and there was a vote called for one, and there was a vote called for the second one, and one of them got more votes than the other. I don't know if that's the correct way to do it or not.
Yeah, there's a lot to be said for past practice, Counselor, so I think, yes, that's fine, and that's what we've done before, you're correct. When there are a list of names, we would vote individually one at a time, correct? So if the council, I think the last discussion, Mr. Mayor, was that one name would be determined tonight per district. Counselor Scott indicated that there's only one applicant for her district, and so for Counselor Pease, District, District One, there are four names, and Counselor Pease has indicated a name that he would like to bring forth. So the council, if you, welcome to vote on that, if you'd like to fill in the blank, but also I know Counselor Herman has also brought forth a name.
I guess, what would the council like to do at this point? Like to vote on people individually, send them all, fill it out on the floor?
You might understand, Mr. Mayor, that the district counselor, the district ward counselor, not to be confusing here, is going to post the nomination, and the rest of the council will vote on that nomination, in which case, if the district counselor is Counselor Pease, he's already made a nomination.
Madam Clerk, am I to understand that the entire council votes on the nominations?
The, when the ballot comes back, the, which will be at the next council meeting, then the full council votes on those names. I do not recall...
I guess, Administrator Hunter, did you have something to...
No, I was going to say, at that point, they vote, and it gets narrowed down to one name.
Right, okay.
But at this point, I guess the direction should be, somebody needs to either make a motion just to put one name, and then nominate the rest from the floor, or nominate, or leave that blank and nominate them all from the floor.
What is the motion, Counselor LaChapelle, just for clarification?
To nominate one name right now, and then, and then if we have the ability to add, add from the floor. Is that what you said, Director Hunter, excuse me?
Somebody needs to make a motion to that effect, and...
Make that motion.
And fill in the blank.
Fill in the blanks, so...
With a name.
I, well, do you want to make that motion, Counselor Pease?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we nominate one now, and if we can, Robert Reed. And when I'm at the caucus, I will submit the others if I can. And if Counselor Herman has a name, I'd be glad to submit that as well.
Counselor Clement seconded it.
I did.
Okay, all right, I guess discussion on this motion, or are we good at this point?
Move the question.
Counselor Cholinas, did you have something?
So, you know, okay, so what we've decided to do is to move one name forward, potentially three others if they can be, as opposed to just moving all four forward, seeing what comes back, and then voting, is that correct?
That is my understanding. That way we are in compliance with their Section 5.5.1.
Okay, I understand that, thank you.
Any discussion before a vote? Wait, Counselor Herman?
Just, I would just ask if we could, if Madam Clerk could reread the motion before we vote.
Absolutely, yes, thank you, Counselor. So the motion, moved by Counselor Pease, seconded by Counselor Clement, is to nominate Robert Reed for the District One, resident representative to the Anderson County Budget Committee, and to also direct Counselor Pease, if it is allowed tomorrow evening, to submit the other names on the floor of the caucus, the other names of applicants who've submitted interest as well.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
No.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to one.
Yeah, do we need to now make a motion for Counselor Scott?
Sure, we can do a motion for Counselor, for District Two.
So I make the motion that I will be nominating Bridget Sikowski. Sikow, I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correct, but I have it right now.
Seconded by Counselor McCarthy. Discussion on this motion, counsel. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Sure, Counselor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. And now, if you wouldn't mind indulging us to vote on the entire resolution, just so we have that clear in the book.
I would be happy to.
So moved.
Counsel, Counselor Scott followed by Counselor Pease, and Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Ward Five?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and Administrator Hunter. Agenda item number thirteen.
Agenda number thirteen, review of the current ordinance pertaining to the keeping of bees on residential properties, and to discuss potential amendments.
May I have a motion, please?
No, moved.
Counselor McCarthy followed by Counselor LaChapelle. Director Hediger, is there, can you start us off, please?
We got a complaint about bees, and we went to a neighborhood, and they do not meet our ordinance with respect to proximity of hives or colonies set back from residents. So staff issued a notice of violation to the property owner who owns the bee. The property owner, I believe, reached out to the council president and grew up to talk tonight about whether or not we should be considering any changes to the ordinance.
Thank you, Director Hediger. I'm sure we will need you in just a little bit. Discussion from the council. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, a question for Director Hediger that came up late this afternoon. In reading Chapter 14, it's an ordinance that was passed in 2001, and it specifically states at the head of that ordinance that enforcement of this chapter shall be by the animal control officer.
Good point.
So therefore, does the notice of violation, I mean, what, what does that carry?
If it does...
Would not the animal control officer have to go and cite these people?
Yes, he would.
For violation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I believe we have some public comments, I'll reserve further comment until after the public, if that's okay with you.
At your discretion, counsel.
Thank you, sir.
Further public comment at this time? I'm sorry, further discussion from the council at this time. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Were you involved in the formation of this ordinance? Were you? You weren't?
Nope.
Do you have any knowledge of what brought it, what brought it up?
I don't, actually. I, Kathy Monte, the city clerk, brought to my attention today that there was some work done in 2001, I think it was, by the past administration, where there was somewhat of an overhaul to the entire ordinance with respect to keeping of animals. It's not clear to us whether or not the bee section was part of that, or where it was taken from, but no, I don't, I can't, I don't really know anything about bees, so depending on where this goes, I'm going to be learning a lot more.
So you have no firsthand knowledge, I mean, or any learned knowledge on bees, and how far they should be from residents, or anything like that?
I do not.
Do you happen to know this individual, how far the hive was from the neighbor's house?
My understanding is it's probably in the range of 60 to 65 feet. The people with the bees did copy me on a letter with their concerns about this. They suggested a change of 65 feet from their residence, that that would be acceptable to them, so I'm assuming that's what it is. One of our members, a staff, did determine, though, that it was closer than 100 feet.
Okay. I, can I talk about my feeling on bees?
It's council discussion at this point. Counselor, please continue.
I wholeheartedly support redoing this ordinance for a couple of reasons. One, I like bees more than I do chickens. Anyway, bees are an important part of the ecosystem, and they're under, between climate change and diseases and stuff, they're in short supply right now. I think anything we can do to support the bee population would go well. I would like to see it brought down to 50 feet. I think that's, should be an acceptable distance from someone else's house. I mean, you can't stop Mother Nature, if someone could have a beehive hanging outside their bedroom window. I mean, bees go where they want to go, but as far as keeping a hive that, that keeps the bees in one spot, I think if we go down, bring that down to 50 feet from a neighbor's house, I would wholeheartedly support that. Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, I've, I think it, the council should be privy to some information that I did develop today. Going back to 2001, Chapter 14 apparently was developed at the request of a then counselor. I won't name names so we get anybody else involved in this, but it was done to address the growing problem associated with a variety of vicious dog incidents, which have occurred in this city and throughout the state over the past several years. That was the impetus for Chapter 14. Apparently, administration went out and looked across the country at various animal control ordinances, and I think hence, that's the language in there, that shall be enforced by the animal control officer. No mention was made of bees, but this whole chapter came about as a result of this project. There are several comments, some members of the public questioned why animals would be allowed even tethered in cemeteries. I mean, you know, apparently it was a well-discussed topic back then, but bees were not brought up as part of the concern, according to the memo from administration on that. This was passed all, I don't know, just 30 or 40 sections in here, in one fell swoop. I know of no information that would define why this distance, 100 feet, came up, why not 105 feet, why not 22 feet, why not 500 feet? From what information I have learned, and I have learned probably more about bees than I wanted to know over the last couple of weeks, but I, I don't see a tremendous danger here. It's not like we're talking venomous snakes or anything like that. Honeybees, yeah, they do sting on occasion defensively. You go up and rip the hive apart, they're going to come after you. Otherwise, they aren't going to bother you, because they're going to die if they do. I think the, the keepers that brought this to my attention have got some information, and I would defer to them to let them explain a little bit more about what's going on. But I think, to me, the, the distance involved here was completely arbitrary. I don't see any reason for it. I don't see any other similar ordinances in the state of Maine. The state does have requirements for permitting, and of course, there's a fee involved based on the number of colonies and all that, but that's the only requirement. They defer to localities if there's anything further. This was passed in 2001. All of the references in this chapter to the keeping of bees have since been repealed by the legislature. So, we may be unable to, to do anything as is anyway. I, that would be up to legal authority to define that, but all of the things that they refer to here as the state's mandates have been repealed by the legislature. There is new language out there, though I don't know what the effect of that is, but I would think that, that's all I've got to say. I'll let the public ring in on it, let the beekeeper speak, anybody else that wishes to speak. Let my colleagues make a determination if we have a sentiment to doing something or not. Thank you.
Counselor Pease, did you have something to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things, just footnotes, and an experience. Number one, it says you can't have more than two columns for a quarter of an acre. People don't understand, quarter of an acre is a little over 10,000 square feet, which would be approximately a 100 by 100 lot. If we base it on 100, 100 feet, that person cannot have two, because it can't be 100 feet away. So I think that, I think the 100 is a little, little much. When it goes to quarter, to half, it goes from 10 up to 21,000, and then the half to a full acre goes up to 45,000. I don't see them having any problem with distances. So I think we go along with Counselor McCarthy, I think we need to lower the foot, distance. I'd recommend also 50 feet. And last but not least, you were right about, if you don't bother them, they won't...
And last but not least, um, you were right about if you don't bother them, they won't come after you. Well, I golf in this golf course every week and walk by this place all the time. Never get stung, until I went in to get a ball that I drove into the grove, I stepped on bees' nest. And I got stung quite a few times before I even got out of there. So, yeah, they won't bother you unless you bother them. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. I guess I have a couple of questions. Director Hediger, is, was there a particular reason why the neighbors called? Was there a specific, did somebody get stung? Did they feel it was too close? Was?
I believe, I don't believe anybody's been stung. I think they had just questioned whether or not they could have it that close to their home.
Okay. So, and another question I was going to have was, and I, I believe Counselor Clement answered it, I'm, I was curious about state of Maine language, and if there was any state of Maine language around this, that we wouldn't have to come back and change something again. That was my only concern, to double, to maybe double-check on that. But as far as the bees themselves and possibly changing it, I mean, the size of my garden, I'd have a beehive if I could any day, so I'm, I'm all for that. I wouldn't have a problem with this at all.
I think to answer Counselor Scott's question, the only, uh, regulation the state puts on is a fee for a permit per colony. It is my understanding that these folks have half a colony. I don't know. I haven't counted. I, I don't know what a colony is, what a half a colony is, or, or whatever. But the state has exactly a permit fee, and I believe in this case it would be like ten dollars annually. And the purpose for that, as I understand the state statute, is to track disease. Bees are amenable to, or susceptible, I guess would be the word, to, to various diseases. That's one of the reasons we have a decline in the bee population. There was some type of a mite, I believe, here over the last two or three years that has wiped out, uh, quite a few colonies. And farmers I know try to get rental hives. They have difficulty because there was such demand for them. We have a couple of large market gardeners here in Lewiston, in my ward, that, uh, require bees in order to pollinate their crops, and they have a hard time getting those bees, because they're in such high demand. So with everything going on, and I'm not saying that this is right up this alley or not, but the state of Maine just passed a constitutional amendment to the right to food. And they've already litigated a case, I believe in Kennebec County Superior Court, there's litigation ongoing, to change Maine's hunting laws so that you can hunt on Sunday, because we have a right to food. I'm not sure that's going to fly, but these are the types of things that are going to come up. And sooner or later, somebody will say, hey, we have a right to keep bees. You can't tell us we don't. I, I don't know. I just think it's something worthy to visit. I'd, I'd like to hear from the folks, hear them present the case, any opposition that might be out there, and then see if there is any sentiment from my colleagues to direct staff to do something, perhaps, uh, changing this ordinance. Or not, whatever the case may be. I thank you.
Uh, I, I know that we've discussed, um, animals around the table here recently. And, uh, my concern is that, you know, uh, bees versus chickens, uh, you know, um, people can be allergic to bee stings. And so I'm just concerned about, um, you know, I realize, uh, the counselor mentioned that a hundred feet was arbitrary, but that it in fact probably prevent, um, most people from keeping bees in Lewiston. And, um, yeah, I'd be concerned about arbitrarily changing it at this point. Further comment from the council before we go to public comment? Counselor Pease?
Do we have a application for permit for bees, at bees?
We do not.
Are we looking to formulate one?
I'm not.
The only reason I ask that question is, uh, if the application would have a question on it saying that, did you contact your neighbors within that certain amount of distance, whether or not you were allergic, that you could take a little more precaution? That's, that's the only thing I'd have to worry about. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We are now going to, uh, public comment for this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I believe we have a couple of photographs that have been loaded onto the computer. Perhaps Director Hediger would be willing to put those up on the screen. I think it would assist, uh, the lady in explaining the case.
Uh, Director Hediger, if you'd be so kind.
And if I may, and I am a fairly loud speaker, so if I'm overwhelming the microphone, please, please let me know. My name is Melanie Allen. I am a former resident of Lewiston, not a current resident, but I've been speaking to the beekeeper in Lewiston in question. I am a three-year beekeeper and an attorney in the state of Maine. I practice out of Mexico. I believe that my beehives are more than a hundred feet from my home, but I have a hundred acres. I've got plenty of room to set them up. And I think that I can answer most of your questions and provide possibly some guidance. I actually drafted some proposed changes to the section about beekeeping that I think will satisfy some of the concerns that are rightfully mentioned about safety. There are people who are allergic to bees. They're actually fairly rare. I found some documentation today indicating that nationwide, there are, I, I found one source saying maybe as many as fifty deaths from bee stings a year in the United States. I found another source saying no more than seventeen. I have brought printed materials that I would be happy to share with the council. I only brought five copies of each. I wasn't quite certain how many of you there were, and I only had a, a few hours in which to do my homework. But if it pleases the council, I would like to provide some materials as I speak.
Mr. Mayor, I think the administrator would copy and email.
I can send them out.
Yeah, perhaps you could leave them with our administrator when you're finished.
I can certainly do that, and if I can put them together afterwards, that would be helpful to me. Thank you. So when we talk, I'm going to address the safety concern first, I think, which is a little out of order from what I'd planned. When we talk about bee stings, most people are actually talking about wasp stings. There's a huge variety of naturally occurring bees and wasps, and one of the documents I actually brought with me is, you know, it, it turns out it, it ends up being a meme on Facebook, right? And it talks about yellow stripey things, yellow jackets. If you have food, they want it, they're going to fight you for it. Honeybees are, have actually been bred for quite some time for docility. So yes, if you go and you shake up their hive, you might get stung. But even at that level, you might not. I go into my beehive on a regular basis, not very smartly, in shorts. I have done it because I wanted to check on something quickly, and it's too hot. I don't want to go inside and then walk more than a hundred feet to my beehive. I don't always get stung. I very often do not get stung, and I'm basically pulling bees out on their couch and shaking them up and saying, no, you're done with whatever you're doing. And they don't sting me. Sometimes they do.
Excuse me, we have reached the, um, the normal time limit. I'm going to give you, uh, a couple extra minutes here, but we need to, um, yeah.
Thank you. I believe that most of the components of that two thousand and one ordinance came from the best, the commonly accepted best practices for beekeeping, especially in urban areas. Those practices have zero to do with any physical distance from a home. I agree with Counselor Pease that, um, while I, I disagree that the, to the effect that your ordinance requires a hundred feet from another occupied residence. So it doesn't require a hundred feet from your own. But on any quarter acre sized parcel, that's likely surrounded by other quarter acre sized parcels, that is darn near impossible. So we have two things coexisting in contradiction with each other. The best practices of bees are outlined in your ordinance almost verbatim. Two hives or colonies for a quarter of an acre, up to four hives or colonies when you get up to half an acre. The next jump is at one acre, and it goes up to, I believe, six colonies, and then eight if you have more than an acre. If you have some setbacks of more than two hundred feet from, from either the property boundaries that the property is on, or other properties, if, if, if the property has boundaries that are smaller than two hundred feet away from the colony, but the abutting properties are undeveloped, that's where distance comes in with the best practices of beekeeping and allows for unlimited numbers of colonies. What I recommend to the council, and if I may hand this out at the moment, and I'm happy to email it as well. There are some concerns. Do you mind sharing? Third grade, right? I have three more. There are concerns that I have, looking through some of the language in chapter fourteen, some confusion maybe about what constitutes a wild animal, what constitutes a domestic animal, that I think may pertain to bees. It was a little bit unclear to me, reading through it, where they fall. I think that that deserves a little bit of attention, but what I primarily would recommend.
Please speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. What I would primarily recommend is a require, follow those best guidelines. And so the number of colonies per size of the lot in question, and to position the colonies in particular ways. The entrance of any colony is on one side. Don't face that to your neighbors. Don't face it onto a public way. Don't face it onto a sidewalk, unless you have something there in front of the hive that will force the bees to fly up and over. This is common practice. It's in the best practices of several different organizations that I will provide documentation of. In this case, I believe that her family has an entirely fenced-in yard that encloses the bees, a six-foot fence.
Thank you for this. At this point, um, we are, I'm going to ask you to be finished, and then, um, we will, uh, if you have anything for anyone to say, you can simply, um, submit it to our administrator who will forward it along to all of us.
I will do that.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Mr. Mayor, I believe the property owner is here as well, would like to.
And I took her time. I apologize.
Um, at, at this, yes, will you, please continue. Please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Lisa Sawyer, and I'm the owner of the bees on Darcy Drive. I want to clarify, because nobody knew how many bees are to a colony. We bought a pound of bees, which is approximately three thousand bees, along with the queen. And there are twenty to eighty thousand bees in a full colony, so we have less than a half a colony of bees, way less. We've been very responsible, um, making this decision to have, um, a hive in our home. We put up a six-foot fence and added extension two-foot to make it an eight-foot fence around the whole perimeter of our backyard. We put mesh fencing, um, to where the bees can't get through the mesh, so they have to fly up and over eight feet. We also put in, um, we have quite a list of, um, things in our yard to keep our bees happy. Um, we have three lilac bushes. We have twenty-one raised garden beds, six hanging baskets full of, um, annual flowers, eight different varieties of perennial flowers, including bee balm five feet away from the hive, nine planters of annual flowers, two pear trees, four apple trees, two plum trees, four water sources, and a fifth one being put into place soon. That's just in my backyard. That's not counting the flowers that I have in my front yard. We've tried to be responsible in the decisions that we've made, and part of the reason why we did get the bees is because we do have a garden in our backyard. Um, we do grow our own food. We didn't have enough pollinators last year. We didn't get enough vegetables. So we decided to get bees. Um, and we discovered that our children like honey, so that's another perk. I am a mom of seven children, ranging from two to twenty-four. And my three youngest ones, um, were adopted through foster care. A lot of them, all three of them have special needs. So when the pandemic hit, um, my nine-year-old, um, went on palliative care a couple of months before the pandemic hit. So we chose to homeschool our kids at that point to keep my, um, son safe from germs. So our, we took that job seriously, and our jo, and our backyard literally became part of our classroom. And, um, they love gardening with us. They love planting the seeds in the spring before we can go outside. They've loved learning about the bees. My six-year-old will tell everybody, if you leave the bees alone, they'll leave you alone. So a lot of education happens in our backyard, and I just think it's a shame, um, that we have.
That's time. Thank you.
Yep.
Further public comment?
Good evening. My name is Bill Coffin. Uh, I'm an abutting neighbor. Directly, our backyards meet. Somebody said something about how they, they like chickens better than bees. Chickens stay in the person's backyard where they're, the owner's backyard. Bees don't. Bees travel anywhere from two to three miles a day, collecting their nectar. And as far as, we were told she put up the eight-foot fence all around her property and the netting, it's not all around her property. It's on two sides, but not four sides. My problem with bees, the biggest problem, is I was a scoutmaster. I took a young man to camp one summer. I had to carry an EpiPen in my pocket and be next to him at all times in that camp. Because if he was bit by a honeybee, I only had less than a minute to get that EpiPen in his, in his thigh, or he was going to die. I don't know at this point if I'm allergic, my wife, my kids, my grandchildren, friends, if any of them are allergic. So I'm going to have to make a doctor's appointment and pay for that, and then pay three hundred and forty-one dollars for EpiPen, which expire. So I'm going, that's a recurring bill that I'm going to have to face. I shouldn't have to do, I shouldn't have to do this. And when you talk about the hive being a hundred feet from my, the hive itself, at least, I don't know where it is now, where it was when I saw it installed, was about five feet from my property. So this is a lot shorter than a hundred feet. It's five feet from my backyard way to the swimming pool. And I've been in that house fifty years. I don't think I need to put up with bees in my backyard. I know my time is up. Thank you.
Further public comment on this agenda item? Back to the council for discussion. Counselor Herman?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, and thank you to everybody who spoke. I, I'm someone who is in favor of bees. I've kept bees before, and I was just looking at some of the other, the other setbacks that we have for other types of animals. For livestock, I didn't see a setback, although they are only permitted in the rural or agricultural zones, and it has to be a one-acre lot. For fowl, rabbits, and guinea pigs, I also didn't see a setback in our ordinance. And then for chickens, we've got twenty feet from the property line. So it seems to me that, uh, as I believe it was Counselor Clement mentioned, um, the hundred feet seems kind of arbitrary. Also, if bees do fly, and I'm aware they fly several miles a day, it kind of seems like any setback is, is a little bit illogical, because they're, they're just going to go where they want to go. So I would definitely be in favor of either reducing or, or eliminating the setback, or just reducing it to, uh, something that's a little more reasonable and, uh, can work for everybody who wants to have bees. Thank you.
I would.
We do have a question.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Is, from my understanding from the code enforcement officer, it's a hundred feet from a dwelling. a dwelling, not 100 feet from the property line?
Correct.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. At this point, I would suggest to the council, Administrator Hunter, what did we do with chickens? Did we go to a two-week public comment for that, or can you remind us?
We were going to do either a Facebook post and/or a press release if, to solicit public comment and feedback from the general public, and then bring-
For two weeks, or?
Um, how, how long?
Or what did we decide?
Okay. So, I mean, theoretically, it would be at least two weeks, because if we want to take this up on the 19th, we need to pay, do a legal ad the week before, so we are running up against that two-week, especially with the Fourth of July.
I think we should, yes, I would urge the council to take the same route as we did with chickens, and, you know, conduct a public comment period. Counselor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, you aren't going to like it, but I'm going to move that we direct staff to present us with an ordinance deleting the, the distance requirement. I think we've heard enough here tonight to indicate that it is arbitrary. I mean, nobody can sit back here and tell me which hive a bee came from when it flies through the room, they don't have license plates or any identifiers on them. They do travel five, 10 miles. I think these folks, based on what I have seen in my inspection, what I have read, they've taken adequate precaution, they have an adequate supply of water, as long as they've got what they've got there, and they follow the practices that the beekeeper, bee inspector brought up. And there are bee inspectors throughout the state, there's a chief bee inspector at the Department of Agriculture, there are part-time bee inspectors that can come in at any time. And I think these folks have taken the necessary precautions, and I, I just would hate to see them have to get rid of these things and have this turned around inside of a month. You know? And I'm told that there's no way the council can stay execution on the notice of violation. However, I think the fact that the animal control officer has not entered into this yet, I, I think that an appeal could be filed on the notice of violation, and I know the courts are not going to take this matter up for several months. So, anyway, but I, I would move that we direct staff to come back with an ordinance. We have recommendations for best practices for beekeeping in front of us. I, I would just want to make sure that the citations on state statutes are correct. They, whether those are the ones that were repealed or not, I don't know.
If I may, Counselor Clement, you know, and I want to avoid looking like we're holding court here over this issue, but I guess in the interest of fairness, since I took your question, Mr. Coffin, did you, did you have something at this point? Yeah, we will take your question.
Yes, this was handled-
Do you mind going to, yes, sorry. Just for our audience listening at home.
My name again is Bill Coffin, I'm 47 Mark Street in Lewiston. My question is, if this was handled through normal channels, it would have been an appeal. The appeal would have gone to the appeals board, and every abutting neighbor within 300 feet would have got a notice of when that appeal was going to be heard. But the council doesn't have anything like that in place. So when this comes up, will the abutting neighbors be told that this is going to be heard that night?
Mr. Mayor, if I might.
Uh, Counselor-
If an appeal is taken, the abutters will be notified, anybody within 300 feet. It'll be up to the landowner, I would think, as to whether or not they take an appeal. So if they take an appeal, then it will be set up, and abutters will be notified.
Can you please confirm that, Director Hediger?
Just to clarify, in case there's confusion. The appeal process, if there was an appeal process, that's correct, everybody within 300 feet would receive a notice. To Counselor Clement's point, with the animal control officer, yes, a new notice of violation should be issued from the, from the animal control officer, and that could restart that appeal process. If there's a change, which it sounds like the council wants to consider, there would not be a notice to the abutters, and I think that was a question Mr. Coffin was asking. It's, it's not a zoning and land use matter, it's a code of ordinance matter. Those notices, the only notice with respect to that is a legal ad published by the clerk. So it would be, you know, someone being in tune to either looking at a legal ad or contacting staff to be made aware of what, if any, ordinance changes would be occurring.
And I guess Director Hediger, along with Administrator Hunter, if, if an ordinance would be changed, would that require two readings, or what would be the timetable for this?
Typically, it's two readings.
I believe we have a, a motion on the table.
We do. Is there a second to the motion?
Do we, do we, do we have a second? Here we have now, seconded by Counselor Pies. Counselor, Madam Clerk, can you please reread the motion?
Sure, I believe the motion, Counselor Clement, is to direct staff to present an ordinance at the next meeting, deleting the distance requirement for the keeping of bees.
That would be the essence of it, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy?
Administrative Hunter, do you see any issues with moving forward on that motion?
It, it would still require, require a legal ad and two readings. And at any time during those readings, it could be amended. Excuse me.
What I meant was, by moving ahead with it and not seeking public comment?
No, typically, we don't do special outreach. We did, council instructed us to do that with chickens.
So this is not out of the ordinary to do what Counselor Clement proposes to do?
No.
Thank you.
And to be clear, a, a public comment will be allowed at both of those readings. Yeah, it would be, right, I mean, it would, there'd be a notice in the paper, it's an ordinance change, there'd be two readings. To Mr. Coffin's point, abutters would not be immediately notified.
But they can check the website when the agenda packets post and looked at the, at the agenda item. So you'll be-
It's-
No, we would have, we post packets on Friday. The next council meeting is going to be July 19th. I can pretty much guarantee this, that's going to be an agenda item on that meeting.
It's a, it's a small town, I'm sure they will find out soon enough. Counselor LaChapelle?
Director Hediger, are you going to be reviewing, have you gotten a copy of this recommendations, best practice?
No, I haven't.
Might I suggest, I'll give you mine, and if you want to take a look at that, and where she's an attorney, might have some of our work done already, just to review some of the best practices while you're, while you're housecleaning at the same time.
Yeah, exactly, sounds well, add it to the list.
Okay, thank you, Director.
I would also like to add, at the same, Director Hediger, if this is how the council's proceeding, if we are going to make changes, it would be great, I guess, for planning a code to seek independent thought as to what are the best practices for bees.
Will do.
Okay, further comment from the council on this current motion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Motion passed by vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 14.
Agenda number 14, review of potential amendments to the zoning and land use code. Requested action to, to review a listing of potential amendments to the land use code and to determine a possible course of action.
May I have a motion? Counselor LaChapelle? I was getting there? Hauled by Counselor Pies. Discussion from the council. Or, well, I guess, please kick us off.
Sure.
Yeah.
So if I can, I'd like to just start by introducing Shelley Norton. Shelley Norton is the new director, director, deputy director of planning. Doug Green retired on Friday, and Shelley was offered his position, so she's hitting the ground running here, she's a great asset in addition to the department.
I know you've been here a while, but welcome to Lewiston.
Thank you.
And we are looking for a city planner, so if anybody knows one, send them our way. So yes, what you, a lot of things overlapping with what you have before you tonight here. We talked about agricultural changes and the need for changes there, bees, chickens. You did a lot of streamlining with the provisions that you folks just approved earlier, that the planning board weighed into. So we're looking to keep up with that momentum, and we've kind of had this list ongoing upstairs, I would say, for years, and then Doug added to it, Shelley's added, had to, headed to it over the last six months she's been here as well. So we thought we'd come before you folks and share with you our thoughts about some changes that should be occurring, both in the short term and the long term, that are consistent with the comp plan, consistent with some of the things you folks talked about in your strategic planning session, and see if there's any desire to move forward with some of these things. Basically, the list that you had before you here was shared with the planning board the other night. They absolutely want to be involved in the process, and they would be, because all the things that we're talking about here are zoning and land use matters. So changes are initiated one of three ways, either by petition, initiated by the planning board, initiated by the city council. So depending on how this conversation goes this evening, we're looking for some direction from you folks as to, if you want to initiate any changes here. And if you are, that's great, we'll start the process, it involves public hearings with the planning board, and then comes back to you folks for final adoption, similar to other zoning provisions that we've done in the past. We've broken it down, basically, there's a number of items here, both short term and long term. We've attempted to call things of a short term, something that we might be able to do in two to four months, and everything else taking 12 months, maybe longer. I'll remind you folks, it's kind of one and a half people upstairs doing planning between Shelley and I, and if we're fortunate enough to get another planner on, that will help. But recognizing that both Shelley and the new person will be new people, and if anybody's, you know, worked with us before upstairs, a lot of our day is consumed just by answering questions, working with property owners and whatnot. So to find a time to be proactive has been a challenge ever since I've been with the city. So it's great that we have some competent people on staff, and that we're hoping to get some more. But some of these things in the longer term are going to take some time. So I don't, I don't want to give false hope or impressions that we can jump on all these things right away, but there's some things here that we do think are easier, maybe lower hanging fruit. And when we have these conversations as well, one of the things that we talk about is just how can we make our jobs easier too? Because we spend a lot of time talking with people, just trying to explain the rules to them. So if there's things that we can do to change rules that make our jobs easier, it's probably going to make developers' and property owners' jobs easier as well. I'm not sure if you folks want to hit all these items or not. I guess my thought is, if there are certain ones on here that you reviewed that you want to discuss more, or you feel that should be elevated, Shelley and I can make note of that. There are some things on there that I think, you know, might have some immediate impacts, such as reducing setbacks in certain zoning districts. We deal with setback issues all the time. In fact, we have a variance request tomorrow night before the Board of Appeals relating to a setback. So if we can provide some more flexibility versus having people to go to the Board of Appeals for variances, that would be a positive outcome, I think. We've talked about parking requirements in the past, actually, we've been talking about parking requirements since I've been with the city. And how do we relax those or eliminate those? So we've been talking about what areas in town might it make sense to actually eliminate the parking standards in other areas to reduce them. Granted, that is a change in philosophy from, you know, 30 years ago, no different than road widths, you know, you have older subdivisions with very wide roads, and now the movement is to have narrower roads. Street standards is a long-term goal, as to whether, you know, working with public works and trying to look at our street standards. As far as long-term goals, something that's been discussed repeatedly, but again, it's going to take some time and process, is to look at our zoning district boundaries. If you folks want, Shelley and I can pull up the GIS so we can look at a map tonight, but I think we've discussed before the narrowness of our commercial corridors, Main Street, South Street, Lisbon Street, and where does it make sense to widen those? We've made some attempts in the past before, there hasn't been the political support to do that. It does get controversial, because we are going into people's neighborhoods, right? I mean, if we're expanding the depth of a commercial zoning district, we're probably going into somebody's backyard. That doesn't mean that it shouldn't happen, it's just where is it appropriate and how do we do that? We've heard from developers repeatedly that our setbacks are too narrow, can we widen them, and what benefits will that provide? That's a bigger, bigger ask that I think will take a little bit more time, because we do have to notify all the abutters when we do these things. Back to the earlier comment about when the abutters get notified. If we're making a change to zoning and land use, we have to notify the abutters that are being impacted by that. So we can't expect input from the planning board, input from the neighbors. There's changes in here that are kind of in line with LD 2003. I believe Shelley sent you folks an email kind of summarizing that new law. Depending on where that goes, we are going to have to make changes by next July, right?
July 1st, 2023.
So that, you know, one of the big things that's really geared about-
Excuse me, Director Hediger, can you please move the mic to, there we go.
I'm not loud enough, that's our first.
Our studio audience at home.
They've tuned out by now, you know?
They have not.
He knew you were coming.
Yeah, exactly, you know, so-
For those of you watching at home, we appreciate you.
But that, that LD was all about providing more housing opportunities, right? We absolutely need more housing opportunities in the community of all types, that's something you folks identified in your strategic plan. But that's going to have some consequences too. I mean, we're talking about accessory dwelling units, adding more units to single-family zoning, so there's going to be a lot of discussion with that. Provide opportunities around urban agriculture and farm stands, that's identified in the comp plan. We've had two meetings with you folks recently about what are we doing about bees and chickens, and should we be taking a bigger holistic approach to this? We probably should be. Counselor Clement referenced the constitutional amendment as well, so I mean, that's kind of on the list as well. So, you know, short of going through every single one of these, Shelley and I are just looking for some direction from you folks, and try to answer some questions if you have any right now as well. Basically, what direction should we be going at this point?
Is, am I to understand that both of you have, you know, kind of reviewed these changes, come up with them together, and both of you support these changes?
Yes.
Okay.
These are all things that we've discussed, as well as when Doug was here as well, as far as things that we can do to improve either the process, again, for staff, for the public, for property owners.
Yeah, I guess just to be clear, these are not just some random things, these are, these are ideas that you support and think are a good idea.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you. And I appreciate this proactive approach.
I'll note, the devil is in the details with all these things, right?
Of course.
I mean, just to, you know, blanket-wise, yeah, change the buffer standards or something like that, ask Shelley and I what that is yet, we're not really sure, but we know that there's a discussion that needs to occur with respect to buffers, something like that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, the work that you've put into this and the proactive approach. Discussion from the council? Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hediger, thank you so very much for moving this department forward. Congratulations, this is a great idea, long overdue. One of the questions, and I understand the Herculean task that this is going to entail, for time in your office where it's limited, like the city of Portland on Wednesdays close at noon time for their planning department, code enforcement and planning, and they're all in-house, they're still there, but it gives them the opportunity to work and process stuff, is, because of limited staff, because of vacation time, might that be something that you look forward, or maybe directing this to the city administrator, to give you more time to move forward on, I feel extremely important for our city to move forward, making some of these changes to ease up? I'm not asking for response, maybe to keep that in the back of your mind, and staff, they do that in different municipalities across the state, and maybe that's something we need to take a look at. Heck, the school department, where they close early on Wednesdays or something like that.
Professional development.
Professional development, and we can, we can call it professional development to move the city forward.
Yeah, I can add to that, that we've had some early discussions with administration, to help with some of these things? So, it's something project-specific. So, if we get a sense from, you know, the council that there's a certain item there that maybe a consultant can tackle for us, hey, great, you know, you have six months to go for this and make it happen, and we have somebody working on that. Three months, maybe. I don't know, you know. So, in any event, you know, we're trying to see some options there. Shelley's tried to reach out, maybe to find some interns. Interns are probably, I'm not sure how much they can assist with this stuff, but maybe there's some things they can do on the side that would take, that take our time, and then we can dedicate to this. So, yeah, anything that can, we can do to help the process.
By all means, and I think this needs to move at lightning speed. Congratulations moving forward. I'm definitely one for eliminating some of the restrictions, making it easier for the general public and contractors to come in and develop in our city. We need to take a more proactive stance and support. So, I'm 100% behind this, and whatever you need from, from me as a counselor, whatever, definitely moving forward, and particularly open space on cluster, on developments that are ridiculous, that they shouldn't be there. I think you know what I'm alluding to. So...
That is something that we've talked a lot about. I mean, but that's a big-ticket item potentially, right, as far as we have open space provisions. I won't go into the details of it, other than they're not well-written, and they are needed and being revised.
Yes. So, if, if staff decides that we need to hire a couple other people to, to move them forward, I think that's something we should bring to the council immediately and, and push that through. And I appreciate getting the response from the planning board. I know the chairperson of the planning board's in the house right now, and I definitely appreciate their feedback at the same time. Good job. Please continue.
This is something that I agree with Counselor LaChapelle on. You know, we need to create some space in bandwidth to make that happen. Both of us are available to go answer the phones and respond to email on Wednesdays, so. Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The court system does much the same thing. They shut down regularly to try and catch up on their backlog. That's why there still is a backlog, because they can't process stuff. Just a couple of things. First of all, I would like to see a huge sign at the top of the stairs on the third floor. What can we do to help you? Question mark. And then, you can do things like revise the zoning district boundaries along commercial corridors. That would be key to me. Get that taken care of so we can get some development on some of our commercial corridors, you know, where there's only a 60-foot deep lot or something like that, you know, I'd say. People are resistant to change, I know. The City of Augusta didn't have zoning for years. They just developed willy-nilly, and you'd have a bank which, or a garage which turned into a bank, or a fast-food restaurant or something, and there was just absolutely no wherewithal for it. And zoning came in, I think, in the late 80s, early 90s. And boy, it was, it was a big change for people, but I don't think they'd want to be without it now. So, I realize it's going to be resistant to change, but we've got to do some of these things if we're going to move Lewiston forward. I agree with both of them. I know this is going to shock the mayor. I agree with him 100%, and I agree with Counselor LaChapelle 100%. We've got to move it forward, and we should be doing it lightning speed. Thank you very much.
We can get Counselor Clement to take a shift too, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. I'm not the fastest thing on the keyboard, but I can really put some words out.
I can just imagine the answers coming out.
You got to remember, I was an enforcement guy, so.
Counselor, Counselor Scott?
Thank you. So, I would agree also. I think this is great work. This is work that we need to do. My concern, though, is our comp plan, 2017. We've got newly elected officials. We've got some new planning board members. I really think that we need to make sure that when we're looking at some of these changes, when we're looking at including the changes with the LD 2003, that we need to be really looking at our comprehensive plan. I personally feel, as a former planning board member, and as somebody that has read that comp plan several times, that we really don't look at it and use it enough. It is a phenomenal piece of material that a lot of people put a lot of effort in, and I'm going to use an example specifically, the Sabata Street, East Avenue intersection. When you look at our comp plan, and you look at how that was designed, and how that really would have boosted up that intersection and that neighborhood, and what we got was a Noria that's so far back from the road, and we've got, you know, where Elizabeth Anne's... We've got, that, we didn't use our comp plan. And I really think that as we continue to say it, when we talk about these things, we need to actually use the material that we have available, the work that's already been done. So, what I would like to see is us having a deep dive into our comp plan with the planning board to make sure that we're all on the same page as we're going through these things, and we're using that stuff that we have. And it's not just another plan sitting on a shelf that we did all this work for and we're not using. I think that's an important piece, and that's, and, but like everything else, and I will volunteer on a Wednesday afternoon as well. Might as well. We're all in.
With the, with the previous council, we did a presentation at one point where we provided a whole table, actually, that we had an inter put down with the comp plan, because the back of the comp plan has like this implementation matrix, because it was important to Doug and I at that point too. I agree, it was the first comp plan I've done from start to finish, and I don't want to be the guy that's, oh, yeah, it just sits on a shelf too. So, we've slowly started going through that, and a lot of these things are in there. It's a matter of just tying it into that. And technically, whenever we make a change to the zoning and land use code, we're supposed to tie it to the comp plan. It can't be something that, just because David and Shelley think it's a good idea, there has to be some relationship to the comp plan.
And just to follow up on that, this is one of those things, when we're talking about our image, we're talking about our community. We show that we are following this. We have followed through on these plans. It is actually a good image to our community. This is what we're doing, and we did it. It's here, right here, and we show that. And I think that that's really important as well. It goes along with our strategic planning. It goes along with all of it. So, that's what I'd like to see happen. Thank you.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. So, I'm also in favor of these changes, just looking through. I see a lot of good things there. I just wanted to add that the Housing Committee is also looking into the, the issues around LD 2003. So, it's, that's sort of in its beginning phases, but that would be another, another good resource to draw from and, and work with. Thank you.
Counselor McCarthy?
I know I've had several developers reach out to me, and their biggest concern in Lewiston is all the hoops they have to jump through to make development. They say, how can we push people to develop in Lewiston when they can go across the river into Auburn, and it costs them thousands of dollars less to do, to do the same development, because they don't have all the hoops? And this one gentleman mentioned, you know, you do, you move a doorway, you need an engineering plan and sign off on it before they're, before they'll even talk to you on the third floor. And he says it's, you know, you, you build a new building, and then you decide that you want to move an interior non-supporting wall, and you need an engineering plan to do it. Where it's a brand-new building, they just want to, you know, non-supporting wall, there should be no question, yeah, go ahead, put up a wall. It's not doing anything, but they need an engineering plan to do it. And they said that, you know, it's, it's ridiculous, and it's really hurting development in the City of Lewiston. And I know one of the, one of our goals is to increase development in Lewiston, so I think that that's got to be a priority as far as, I mean, I don't want to just say, you know, doors open, do whatever you want, but I think there's a lot of fine, there's a lot of X-ing out we can do on a lot of non-necessary requirements to developers to make it safe for the people of the city and prosperous for the developer so that they'll come to Lewiston, they won't go across the river. Thank you.
Further comment from the council at this point? Public comment for this agenda item?
Hi, I'm Lucy Bissin. I'm the chair of, of the planning board, and I'm a resident of Lewiston. I live on Sabata Street. We think the planning board had a bit of a discussion last time when we were presented with these items, and the planning board has a feeling that, at times, the planning board is not included in planning. We would like to be more part of the, the decision-making. One of the items that is very important to us is, I'll agree with Counselor LaChapelle, we need to update the zoning in our corridors, Main Street, Sabata Street, Lisbon Street, and I'd also like to see East Avenue. That is a main cross-city corridor, and it's got some really ridiculous zoning. So, but, and I also would like to see us, city council, planning staff, planning board, have a joint workshop to work on this stuff. Thank you.
Good evening. Shannon Cox, 250 Sabata Street. I as well serve on the planning board. I'm so grateful to hear the councilors tonight be supportive of directing both staff and additional resources to this list, and would like to note that when the planning board reviewed this, I think the understanding that we heard, hearing from staff, was that the goal was to get feedback on the priorities of the list. And while I appreciate kind of the bucketing that staff has done to give you a short-term and long-term perspective, and I would be grateful to be both wrong and corrected, Mr. Hediger, but implementing everything on that list would not necessarily be possible in both the four-month and 12-month to complete all of the bullets. I believe that's correct. Is that correct? Can you do everything on that list in 12 months?
Director Hediger, would you like to answer that question at this time?
No, we can't do it on our phone.
Okay, great. That was our understanding, and that part of what the staff was looking for was some feedback, both from planning board initially and from council tonight, on the priorities within that list. So, your full support of the full list is exceptional, and I would strongly encourage discussion at the council, or perhaps in the joint workshop with the planning board, to discuss how to prioritize those. And I'll offer, as an, as an example, in my day job, I get to work with businesses. I am obviously very pro-business, and the biggest concern that I'm hearing from businesses is lack of housing. And so, if you look at that list, both in the short-term and long-term areas, you're going to see different bullet points relative to setbacks, parking, zoning, there's a number of items that could approach both housing and business. What I would encourage you to say, and what I would personally encourage staff to do, is to focus on the items that are going to impact housing first, because right now, the biggest limiter for businesses is not the zoning in the commercial corridor, it's the ability to have workforce and the housing for their workforce. And that is in and of itself a development, and a specific type of development at which those of us who are watching the Twin Cities scores, we continue to not be excelling at. And so, if you look at that list and offered some encouragement or prioritization to city staff, I would encourage you to think about prioritizing both from the short-term and long-term list, those that would impact housing and would open up the business opportunities by then addressing some of the commercial business corridor and other business items. Thank you.
Matt Roy, Ward 3. So, if I understand what people have said tonight, Mr. Mayor and Counselor McCarthy, that there's been two points where we should have merged a few years ago, because that would have made the earlier submission easier, and then Counselor McCarthy, we got all his development goals with Mayor Rebec, and so, what was the other point? I had another point. Oh, and since the comp plan was 2017, isn't it time for a new one? I thought it was a five-year thing, sorry. I thought we did one back in like the early teens-ish, so, sorry. That was the other point.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Jalinas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say thank you for the comments tonight, and thank you for this presentation tonight. I agree that, you know, it's, it's a, it's an important list, but one that would be difficult to conquer unless we really prioritized. So, I love the suggestion heard tonight about a joint meeting. Certainly, we could say what we say, but, you know, to me, the planning, you guys have done a deeper dive, and will be able to bring some of these priorities, especially with what was referenced with housing, more to us. So, I just want to say thanks for that, those comments and the presentation.
And perhaps, I, I like the idea of hiring a consultant, you know, if it would be helpful to move things along, and perhaps there's a consultant that would love to spend the summer in Maine. Counselor LaChapelle?
Yes. I'm just echoing a lot of councilors' concerns, or not concerns. I'm excited. This is a new day in Lewiston. This is just a new beginning. We have an entire planning board and a council that's on the same page, which is exciting. Usually, there's infighting. This is, we're on the same page, and we'd like to just be together moving forward. I thank administration for really driving this forward. David and your Director Hediger and your staff, congratulations. This is what the City of Lewiston has been looking for for a while, and moving forward, and just getting aggressive to assist businesses and assist rental units. Eliminating parking requirements would be one of my top priorities also. Let the free market handle it. Just congratulations, and I'd like to move forward as quickly as we can. I, I raised up three fingers to Director Hediger, three, representing three months. So, I definitely would like to move forward and get this all wrapped up as much as we can before the end of the year, and, and tying them in. So, if it's a joint meeting with the, with the planning board and all for it, and we'll push, in my opinion, this is the number-one issue facing the City of Lewiston, should be addressed, and we should be all, all hands on deck. Let's move forward on it. So, Director, as soon as, excuse me, city administrator, as soon as we can get that meeting scheduled, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Everything that has been said here tonight should be indicative of the fact that we're behind you. For many, many years, involvement in government, we've seen what we can't do. Come back and surprise us. Come back in a hurry and show us a massive list of what has been accomplished, so we can, we can get to work and move this place forward. We've been on the cusp long enough. Sooner or later, the cusp is going to wear down, and they'll have to have an implant or something. So, let's, let's move ahead while we can. Strike while the iron's hot, all of that good stuff. We've got faith you can do it. At least 98% of it, in three months.
You keep talking, it keeps on getting shorter.
Well, we should understand it's an important goal. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Duly noted, Counselor. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I'm nowhere near in the vein of Mayor Rebec on the other side of the river, so I sort of take a little offense to that, because I want to do what the city needs to be done, but what the city, citizens of the city want done. And that's a far cry from what's happening across the river. So, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
At this, Counselors, please, thank you. At this point, what was the motion? What were we looking for this evening?
It was simply just direction, Mr. Mayor, and I believe that that has been provided through discussion to the staff, so I think you've met the requirements or the request for item 14.
Perfect. We are now at agenda item number 15, reports and updates from the council.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much. And thank you for both of you serving on the, the planning board.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Counselor Harriman?
Just wanted to let everyone know that we had World Refugee Day yesterday. I guess this is in, in the spirit of updates. It was a really fun time, and, and I hope, I hope it continues. I know it took a little bit of a hiatus because of COVID, but I hope to see that come back every year going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Scott?
Thank you. So, the last school committee meeting, unfortunately, I had COVID. I did not attend, so I don't have much of a report. But I do want to report that I did have a long meeting with the superintendent today about several different things, and one of the things we had a discussion about was a graduation debrief, where this was the first graduation in quite a bit of time, that we had every elected official there, including some state legislators. The superintendent is going to put out an email to ask everybody for their opinion, to see, you know, what was good, what was not good, what can we do better, how can we move forward. This was the first time that we did it outside in the field. I think that it was a great celebration, but I also think that there are some, maybe some changes and things we need to look at. So, I appreciate that the superintendent is going to do that. I have another report. I know that you all received, and I'm going to be very limited on my comments on this, because this is an active investigation. But we did all receive a... But we did all received a email today about Longley School, and I did talk to the superintendent about it, and we had a long conversation about that as well, and I was able to see all the pictures of what happened. I will be honest, I was, I cried when I saw it. I, I, I was very upset, very saddened, and what, at this point, because there's still information that needs to be obtained, we are going to need some help with that school and with cleanup. And so I'd like to, I'm personally going to volunteer to do what I can to help, and I'm going to bring it up at the school committee meeting next week, and I would like to put it out there that anybody that might be available to help, so that we can get Longley back going to where it needs to be. That is our adult education, that is our next-step program. I understand that school is out at this point, but I'm hoping that we can all come together as a group and really do what we can for that school at this point. I'm sure that there'll be further information coming forward, but at this time, I, I just feel like I need to be very cautious about what I say, because it is an active investigation. I would also like to talk about the youth advisory committee, if I may, just for a moment. So we all saw them this evening, earlier this evening, because they were upstairs finalizing their plans for this Saturday's event. And I cannot tell you how proud I am of these kids and the amount of work that they have done. I mean, the organization of this particular event, all done by them, the courage to go on the radio last week and discuss it and be out there in the public, it, I don't know, when I was 17, 18-years-old, I don't know that I had that courage sometimes to do some of those things. And they left me tonight a nice outline of what they'll be doing Saturday. The event is going to be 11:30 to 5 o'clock at the New McGraw Park on Bartlett Street. It is an all-day event celebrating Lewiston. There's music, there's food, there's, we're going to be having meet-and-greets with city councilors, or some of us are all going to be there together, some are meeting at different times. There's a meet-and-greet with the mayor, the fire department's going to be there, there's a dunk tank, there's going to be art. I mean, it's, it's quite extensive, and when I look at this list, what these children did, this is quite a long list of events that they have going on this day. And they've set up the whole park with everything that they're going to need. I know this is not going to be seen on TV, but it's quite an extensive list, and it's very impressive. And, well, I hope these kids all come back from college and do the great works that they can, they're doing now and continue in our community, because this is really our future, and I'm very, very proud of them, and I'm proud to be their advisor on that. That's all I have for reports right now. Thank you.
Get that scanned out as well?
Yeah, can we make copies of that so that everybody can see? I think they're going to have it on the website, though, I believe, when they finalize it. There was a couple of things on here they were finalizing tonight, so.
And we actually got an email from Dottie earlier today.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Harriman?
I also wanted to add, wish everybody a happy Juneteenth, which was on Sunday, observed yesterday. It's not a new holiday, but it's the first time that it is being observed as an official city holiday, so, yeah, happy Juneteenth.
Further updates from the council? Counselor Clement?
Actually, not an update, but are we kind of melding into other business, I think? Have a little bit. Anyway, just to follow up on...
Not quite, but, yeah, we're on reports and updates still.
Well, based on what Counselor Scott had to say, I talked with Superintendent Magnus today also, and it was quite disheartening to hear that the amount of damage is well into six figures. I do think, after talking with the superintendent, we need to sit down with our school committee again. We need some matters to discuss, and I think our police chief ought to join us for that discussion. I think, I think we, we really need to address some issues that are occurring in town that are starting to feed back to us. That's all I've got to say. I don't want to get into security issues or anything further, because there are a number of very sensitive things to be discussed. And I was assured by the superintendent that the feeling is mutual, so. I think we had a good meeting last fall, and we need to carry that a little further. Thanks.
I'll talk about a couple of things here. The Ward 2 counselor wanted to know if I'd be in the dunk tank, and I'm not currently scheduled to do so, but meet the mayor's at 2:00 p.m. I was also at Juneteenth, a celebration that was hosted by Maine Inside Out that went great. World Refugee Day went wonderful as well. We were joined here by Dr. Shaw, our governor. And I understand that the, what happened to the school is, you know, as Counselor Clement, I think, just put it extremely disheartening, for sure. I would, however, counsel, suggest to the council that, yeah, I, you know, Jake is, Jake is capable, the school committee is capable. I don't want to be seen as, as our body here interfering with decisions that really should be, matters that should be handled by the school committee and the administrators at Lewiston Public School.
I certainly don't think that's the intent, Mr. Mayor.
Further reports and updates before we move on to other business? Other business now. Counselor Scott?
So, of course, we know what happened at the school, but there are other things happening in our community, and I think we do need to have that discussion. I don't necessarily think it has to do just specifically with the schools, and I'd like to bring up again what I brought up at the beginning of the year, and hope that we can have another conversation with the chief police. In my ward last week, there was a business that was broken into, and not only was the business broken into, but the owner's truck, their gas tank was punctured, it was, the gas was removed, and then left to leak out on the driveway. So I, I hate talking about these things, but the weather's getting warmer, we are seeing an uptick in some crime, and I feel as a city council, we do need to address it, and I would like to have that conversation again. That's all I have right now. Oh, and the Riverfest, phenomenal event, by the way. Those other events hap, there was a lot happening, and the Riverfest was great, so thank you.
I think we're ready now for our executive session. Madam Clerk?
Sure. And once again, I don't have the final... Yes, executive session to discuss labor negotiations regarding the city's six labor unions. To enter into executive session pursuant to MRS A Type 1, Section 4056B, to discuss negotiations regarding the city's six labor union negoti, labor unions, International Association of Firefighters, Main State Employees Association, Maine Association of Police, Lewiston Police Supervisory Command Unit, Lewiston Professional Technical Unit, and Lewiston Public Works Unit.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor, I'm sorry, what was, Counselor Clement moved it, but did you have a question, Counselor, please?
I, I would move.
Oh, well, okay, now we, we do have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7? Yes. Ward 1?
Yep.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Motion passed with a vote of 7 to 0.
Good night, Lewiston, thank you. Yeah, we'll take five.